From May the 18th, 2021, we will begin asking our city secretary to call the role. April?
Councilman Delagarza?
I am president.
Councilman Bocknight?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott?
Here.
Councilman Young?
Here.
Councilman Loughran?
Here.
And Mayor Pro Tim Solis?
Here.
Okay, please join me for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of prayer. A silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we will take a moment of silence to allow each member of the city council and those in attendance to prepare their hearts and minds to appropriately do the business of our city. Thank you. Seating in the council chambers remains limited to allow for social distancing. And there are still many residents in our high-risk population. For those reasons, we will continue allowing citizen participation through video conferencing. To learn about all the ways you can watch the meeting and participate remotely, we encourage you to visit www.victoriatex.gov/talktocouncil. There are many options for how you can participate in our meeting tonight, ranging from watching on TV or speaking in citizens' comments during Zoom. At this time, City Secretary April Hillridge will administer the oath of office to Councilman Delagarza, Councilman Bocknight, Councilman Scott, and myself. It will be in order.
I, and state your name.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of City Councilmember District 1, for the city of Victoria and of the state of Texas, and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state.
Microphone.
I, and state your name.
I, Josephine Solis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of District, Councilmember District 2.
Of the Office of Councilmember District 2.
For the city of Victoria.
For the city of Victoria.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
I, and state your name.
I, Jeff Bocknight.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Councilmember District 2, 3, I'm sorry.
The Office of Councilmember District 3.
For the city of Victoria.
For the city of Victoria.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
I, and state your name.
I, Jan Scott.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Councilmember District 4.
Of the Office of Councilmen.
Councilmember District 4.
Of the Office of Councilmember District 4.
For the city of Victoria.
For the city of Victoria.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
Give us what?
A pin. A pin.
We will now elect a mayor pro temp.
Thank you. Article 2, Section 6 of the city charter states that the city council shall elect one council member as mayor pro temp at its first regular meeting after an election, that the elected mayor pro temp shall hold the title and office until expiration of their term for which the elected council member. Mayor Pro Tim Solis's term of office ended this month, and although she was re-elected to be the council member for District 2, council must conduct an election for mayor pro temp to determine who will be mayor pro temp. She is, if she is elected again, she could be elected again if so council so chooses. So at this time, I'll ask for nominations for mayor pro temp.
I nominate Joseph Solis.
My second.
Second.
Are there any additional nominations? Any additional nominations? I have to ask three times for Robert Charles's order. Any additional nominations? Okay, so we only have one person nominated at this time. I did put ballots on your desk, but if there's only one person, you can vote verbally if you so choose.
I move that we elect Joseph Solis as mayor pro temp.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Were you willing, by the way?
Thank you, guys. Thank you for your confidence. I appreciate it. Mr. NTM, do you have any announcements this evening?
No, Madam Mayor Pro Temp, no announcements today.
Now, we're going to go the public employee recognitions. Are we doing the employee recognitions first?
Are we doing employee recognition, April?
I've got Derek over there.
We could, we could read the proclamations, or we could do the employee recognition, whichever. It's up to you, ma'am.
Let's do the proclamations, because we have a lot of people for that.
Okay.
Let's do the one for the.
Motorcycle safety numbers. Okay. Okay.
Yes, you need to come all the way up.
Whereas today's society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycling on the roads of our country, and whereas motorcyclists are roughly unprotected and therefore more prone to injury or death in the crash other than vehicle drivers, and whereas campaigns have helped inform riders and motorists alike on motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle-related risk, injuries, and most of all fatalities through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety, and whereas it is the responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcycles, motorcyclists, regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling the highways of this country, and it is the responsibility of riders and motorists alike to obey all traffic laws and safety rules, and where it is important to urge all citizens of our community to become aware of the inherent dangers involved in operating a motorcycle, and for riders and motorists alike to give each other the mutual respect they deserve. Now, therefore, I, Josephine E. Solis, by the authority vested in me as the mayor pro temp of the city of Victoria, designate the month of May 2021 as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month.
Oh, you can go to the mic. Now I can't find it. Okay. Motorcycle riders would like to thank the city of Victoria on declaring the month of May Motorcycle Awareness. We would also like to thank the independent EMC clubs that came out to show support and to show awareness to the city that we are fathers, mothers, and grandparents. Look twice, save a life.
That's it, thank you. Thank y'all, guys, thank you. Sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Next, we will have the proclamation for the Stop the Bleed program. Whereas acts of terrorism and unstable individuals can lead to casualties with massive bleeding, where if response is delayed, can result in death, May 20th, 2021 is National Stop the Bleed Day, whereas the general public learns and performs CPR, and most, the public must learn proper bleeding control techniques, including how to use their hands, dressings, and tourniquets. Victims can die quickly from uncontrolled bleeding within five to 10 minutes. Bleedingcontrol.org, initiative of the American College of Surgeons and the Hartford Consensus, along with the private and nonprofit partners, can help prepare you in the event that you are the witness to one of these unspeakable events. Whereas the Golden Crescent Regional Advisory Council is partnered with Bleedingcontrol.org to teach the Stop the Bleed training to the citizens of Victoria and the Golden Crescent region. Now, therefore, I, Josephine E. Solis, by the authority vested in me as the mayor pro temp of the city of Victoria, designate May 20th, 2021 as National Stop the Bleed Day in Victoria, Texas. The next proclamation is on Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and discovery, recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize and value the accomplishments of the emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, I, Josephine E. Solis, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of this, uh, mayor pro temp of the city of Victoria, designate the week of May 16th through 21st, 2021 as Emergency Medical Services Week in Victoria, Texas.
Mayor Pro Tim Solis, council, thank you very much. On behalf of the RAC, my wife is usually not shy for words, but for some reason she is tonight. But I'm up here representing the RAC as Carolyn Knox is our chair, Melinda Fox is our vice chair for the Stop the Bleed proclamation. Thank you so much for bringing attention to that. I know COVID has distracted us a little bit and kind of changed our mission this past year, but Stop the Bleed is a very important mission, and our RAC has trained well over 2,000, 3,000? Eight, 8,000? 8,000 people in the crossroads region, I was a little off. But what that training does is, as the proclamation states, allows people to be educated and to save a life in an emergency. And just right over here, if you look on top of our AED, those are Stop the Bleed kits, and that's what those are for, to stop the bleed. And so if there is a bleeding emergency, we have access to that equipment right there. And there's several people. Mr. Delagarza is a trainer and a Stop the Bleed technician, so, as well as a lifelong paramedic. So thank you very much for that proclamation. And on behalf of EMS Week, thank you very much for bringing attention to the EMS world and to what the duties and responsibilities that EMS services provide. Thanks to leadership like Mr. Delagarza, who way back when started with the Victoria EMS, has just set a gold standard for EMS in the Victoria region, and we continue to build on his legacy and all the work they did with Victoria EMS. So thank you very much for that recognition and proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. Employee recognitions?
Yes, Mayor Pro Temp, we do have one today. So today, we would like to recognize our municipal court office. So the municipal court office recently received national recognition for the Tyler Public Sector Excellence Award for its innovative use of Tyler Technologies' ENCODE Court software. The court was selected from about 1,000 ENCODE users nationwide and was one of 31 winners across 17 states recognized for this award. So this is a very highly regarded award, and I would like to thank Tiffany Torta and her staff for getting this award.
Thank y'all so much. We're also very thankful for our IT department as well, who's been instrumental in helping us with our software system. So thank y'all so much.
You're welcome. Items from council. Are there any items not otherwise listed on the agenda for which members of the city council would like to request specific factual information, a recitation, a recitation of existing policy, or a placement of future agendas?
I have the one on there. The points become moot. Started working with Mr. Garza last week or the week before and spoke to Ms. Solis about facial coverings in the city buildings. Mr. Delagarza worked with his team, and Chief Fox, thank you, and spoke with local health department, Dr. McNeil, and everybody came to the same conclusion that it was time to remove that, and saw today that the governor actually put it into executive order that by Friday, it'd have to happen anywhere, you get fined. So I want to thank Mr. Garza and his team for coming to the same conclusion, but I was going to bring it up here in case we needed to discuss it, and it's.
Thank you. Thank you for initiating that discussion, if you're the one that initiated it. As a reminder, citizens' communication may be done in person or through video conferencing. We would encourage anyone who has had a recent exposure to COVID-19 or those that may be in high-risk population group to make sure, to make use of the video conference options. Those, those instructions are available at www.victoriatex.gov/talktocouncil. Comments will be limited to two minutes, three minutes in duration, and will be received by audio only. There will be no opportunity to provide any presentation or visual materials, either in person or via teleconference. Please remember to silence any cell phones, televisions, or other background noise so that we may hear you clearly when you make your comments. It is generally the practice of the city council not to respond to comments made during this time, but city staff will be available to follow up as necessary. If you wish to speak about the Crestwood Drive Phase 1 traffic flow, please refrain from commenting until the public hearing on that item, when we do the public hearing for that item. I have some comment cards. I was going to also say that on the farmer's market, can you wait till we talk about the farmer's market, Meredith? I appreciate it. Okay. If you wish to speak through video conference, please use the raised hand button now. James, do we have anybody?
Mayor Pro Temp, the farmer's market's not in the public hearing section of the, of the agenda, but obviously it's your discretion if you want to allow those individuals to speak during the regular action item portion of the meeting.
Meredith, do you want to come on up, or do you want to wait? You'd rather come up now?
Well, I don't, I don't really understand. Is there an advantage to now versus later?
Just the length of our memories.
Okay, so, I mean, would council rather?
You would. You want to come up?
Starting my three-minute timer, okay. So, good afternoon, council members. My name's Meredith Byrd. I'm with the Food Bank of the Golden Crescent, and I am the manager of the Victoria Farmer's Market. I'm here today to ask that you approve our application for designated farmer's market status. The Victoria Farmer's Market is a weekly, year-round farmer's market held every Saturday at the Patty Dodson Center from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and all vendors at our farmer's market are only allowed to sell what they grow, raise, or make themselves. This means you might find seasonal fruits and vegetables, pastured meats. We've got beef, chicken, pork, turkey, lamb, farm eggs, and a variety of homemade foods such as pickles and jellies, salsas, local honey, baked goods, plants, wines and coffees, dried herbs and seasonings, candies, and a small number, oh, excuse me, a small number of artisan items. All, all produce must be from that vendor's garden. All meats and eggs must be from those, from that farmer's animals. We are a Texas Department of Agriculture certified farmer's market. That's a designation that we have to apply for yearly and that we've held every year since 2016. There frankly is no comparable market within about 100 miles. A weekly, year-round producer's market with the number and variety of offerings that we have, and I'm insanely proud of that. We do not allow resale of any type at our market. As I stated before, you can sell what you grow, raise, or make yourself, and we enforce that strictly. And that speaks to the integrity of our market, of our vendors, and of our products, and it's something that our customers really demand. And I'll get customers coming up to me on Saturdays asking, you know, if they're a new customer, well, is this one of those markets where vendors are allowed to go buy wholesale produce and turn around and sell, and sell it? And the answer is always an unequivocal no, absolutely not. Our membership boasts 48 local small farms and businesses, 22 of those being from within Victoria County. We have 42 food and agriculture vendors, six artisan vendors. That puts us at 87% food and ag and 13% non-food. We are an essential community service, supporting local farms and businesses and providing a way for the public to purchase fresh local foods every Saturday directly from the farmers and the food producers. We had two food shortages in one year, March of 2020, and again this past February due to the freeze that brought countless new customers to our markets when other retailers, other retailers in town were wiped out. And so that speaks to our community service. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for abiding through the three minutes. Okay, the next person that we have is Michael Vander, Vanderon.
How you doing?
Fine, Michael.
I thought you were going to be the mayor. Sorry about that. Hi, I'm Michael from 2204 East North Street, and we have problems with dogs at large. And the problem isn't education, because people know you got to use a leash, even elementary children. And, and the big problem is they, animal control gets them in the cages, and they pay the $75 fine, and then they release it. And then you catch it a week later, they pay the $75 fine, then they release it. And I just wish they could discontinue the $75 fine and send it straight to municipal court and let the municipal court education, educate them, because it's not working with animal control. And the fines are $267 at the municipal court level. And when they do get a fine with animal control, it, it don't count against them. It's similar to a nonjudicial punishment in the Navy where you get punished by your commander, and it don't go on your civilian record. So it would be similar to getting like a warning ticket from a police officer. And my neighbor, I caught his dog like three times in two months, and he's laughing. It's funny, because he pays the $75 and gets it. And a lot of the people don't work, I have a job, so they go into the traps and release it. And it's just getting ridiculous. I even caught a pregnant pit bull, you know, and the people won't get the dogs fixed. We've had injuries through dog bites. Even in the trailer park, one of the dogs has bit two people, and police and animal control had to come. And of course, we have animal abuse in my area. I remember the police and the animal control, they work together, and the dog hadn't been fed in like a week, and they couldn't walk on their own. And I would like to see criminal prosecutions for animal control. And it's really frustrating for everyone in the community. One person, he got so frustrated, he put some gopher bait and mixed some meat together and put it on his property lines. That way, he figured if the dog got it, he wouldn't be responsible. And they, they did find out about it, they did prosecute him, but the jury found him not guilty. And I think the reason for it is because people are frustrated with all these dogs running around, and really, no one's doing anything. And I wish on the third offense in a year's time, they could just make it a Class B misdemeanor and just cuff them up and put them in jail a few days. And they could have the deputy or the police officer educate them while they're in jail, because this education is not the answer. It's not working. And animal control, oh, I went over, and animal control has educated them, and it's not worked. Maybe the city municipal judge can educate them. Thanks, and have a good day, appreciate it.
Thank you, Michael. Next, we have items for public hearings, and the first one is an update on Crestwood Phase 1 traffic flow. First, we will open the public hearing on this item and then hear the presentation from staff. If you wish, wish to speak to this item, please raise your hand, feature on Zoom, or submit a comment card to city staff. I do have one from Mr. Walter Hawken.
Mayor Pro Temp, are people not allowed to speak unless they've filled out a card? I noticed that you didn't ask if there was anyone else, and I don't know if there might be somebody here or not on Crestwood. Has our procedure changed that they have to fill out?
No, because I was doing the card first, and then it says I'm supposed to ask about the people, if anybody else is here.
Okay, but you've moved into Crestwood. There, there might be somebody here that wants to speak on something other than Crestwood. And I may be completely wrong, but I don't think you asked if there was anyone here. And that's why I'm asking if they have to fill out call my cards.
No, because I asked James if there was anybody that wanted to speak all ago, and he said no.
That would be on Zoom. Is there anyone in the chamber that wants to speak?
Is there anyone on the chamber that wishes to speak to council? Is there anyone on the chamber that wishes to speak to council on any other matter? Come on up, please.
Thank you.
I would like to speak about, yes, go ahead. Okay. I would like to speak about the Tanglewood subdivision. It's an old subdivision. It was started in the 50s, early 60s, so it's about 60 years old. And Ms. Scott had told me five years ago that our subdivision would be, our streets would be redone completely, and we'd get new sewer lines, new water lines in 2021. I've got it posted on my refrigerator door, okay? Now, she tells me we're off the table. Y'all knocked it off the table. Why? Okay, I tell you, patching patches is not working. Now our patches are growing larger. Now they're 12 by 20s on the side of the streets, taking care of all of that mess, and it's not working. And I'll tell you why. I've been having trouble with my signal lights in my truck, and I've always done the maintenance on my vehicles myself. So I get the light out and I check all my bulbs like I've always done before, replace all the bulbs, nothing. I took it to the mechanic. He said, ma'am, you need to stop going over potholes. I said, I'm just going in and out of my neighborhood, and it's mostly hills and valleys in my neighborhood. It's just like this, like this. It's so bad, my next-door neighbor has Parkinson's, and he's in his 80s. His wife told me that he is reluctant to go to the doctor appointments because it's so painful for him to get out of the neighborhood and come back in. It's painful. It's bumpy. It's terrible. The entrance on Teakwood, forget it. It's a disgrace. It's just a terrible disgrace. This is so unfair. Why is Woodway picked before us? Why is Brembo Bush picked before us? Why is Castlewood picked before us? Is somebody being biased here? Does somebody have relatives living there or yourselves living there maybe, and y'all pick those names? You allocated 2.7 million to streets. What do we get? We get nothing. No, sir. And y'all, four or however many y'all, have made a liar out of Ms. Scott because Ms. Scott said we were going to have it, and now it's off the table. So you other guys made a liar out of her. Do you understand? Y'all made a liar out of Ms. Scott. We are not going to put up with it. There's people here from Tanglewood that would like to speak also, so I don't want to take too much time because I would like for others to speak. But I am angry. I am 81 years old, and I am going to fight City Hall. I will fight City Hall. My son said, Mom, you'll be carried out of there in cuffs. So be it. Let them carry me out in cuffs. This is important to me. And at 81, I say what I think, okay? Somebody else might want to have the mic. Y'all are welcome to come and speak. You want to go talk, John? You want to say something? Go for it. This is our chance. Go. And we're all old. We're in our 80s.
Hello, I'm Don Consley. I live in 1006 Westwood. And the potholes in Tanglewood are outrageous. They keep coming in and patching them, and they'll come back in and they'll repatch them. And the streets in there are just like a washboard. And somebody that has a back problem, which my wife has, every time we go out, she says, ouch, oh. And it's something ridiculous. So like Laurie said, they said they were going to redo them in 2021. Here it is, 2021. We're already halfway through the year, and we're still dealing with the same stuff. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
My name is Loopy Martinez, and I also live in Tanglewood on Westwood Street. And yes, these are my neighbors, and like they're saying, I'm in the same boat they are. We live four or five houses apart from each other, no farther. But most of the street is pretty bad. I can either go fishing and fight the waves, or I could go down Westwood Street and fight the road. But I have a wife that's at a back surgery and deteriorating disc on her. So even though she's had an operation, her disc is not holding up. And it's true, exactly what they're saying, even though I hadn't mentioned it to them. But she's always moaning and groaning as we go down the street. And I try to take it easy, but of course, it doesn't do any good. The struts on my truck, they were out, you know? I hadn't really seen that before, that they were out so soon. Of course, if you're out there in the pasture and you're running after cows or whatever, I could understand that. But on a neighborhood street, it's pretty bad. So all we're asking is for y'all to take a good, serious look at it and think about it and see what y'all can do for us. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Okay, update on Crestwood Phase One. Walter, Mr. Hawkins?
Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council and management of Victoria, on behalf of the residents of the recently reconstructed section of Crestwood, we want to thank you for listening and responding to the safety and residential concerns that we are experiencing. Following the recent residential gathering held last Thursday, we want to thank our city councilman, Mr. Delagarza, Victoria Police Department's Deputy Chief Jamison, who advised that he made a traffic stop while waiting for the gathering to start. We also want to thank the Assistant City Manager, Mr. ATN, City Engineer, Mr. Gibb, and Victoria Advocate, Ms. Delalora, for taking time out of their busy lives to come and listen to the, and address the issues that affect our daily lives. I delivered a neighborhood questionnaire to allow residents to vote on the proposed layout that we were given. Every household contacted voted that it is the best option available. We realize that the proposed changes aren't ideal for us, but we know that they are most easiest and most cost-effective. I understand from what was presented, the cost to restrip stays below the reconstruction's budget. Hopefully, the residences of the section currently under reconstruction will be presented the proposed layout for them to understand what is coming. At the last meeting, there was a couple of questions that were put out. One was what is the difference between the existing road with the traffic above, right beside our driveways, or our sidewalks, and the way it was with, the way it is now? Well, the difference is that that barrier curb is no longer there to deflect out-of-control vehicles, as was shown with that one vehicle that was parked up in his yard, partly on the sidewalk, but in his yard. And so he was actually up in his yard when the vehicle hit him. So now the curbing only has about an inch and a half raised all along the length of that road, which kind of makes it interesting pulling into our driveway as we negotiate and come up against that lip. The residents of East Crestwood Drive, thank you all for addressing this issue, and thank you for this time as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to us about the Crestwood?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I wasn't planning on speaking on it. I'm not very good at these things, but I do appreciate the reasonableness that you've addressed this issue. We had to expect a lot more resistance from you guys as you caught the brunt of Tanglewood. We were kind of expecting that as well. And you've been quite reasonable in hearing and addressing our concerns. And we know that we should have been involved early on in the design stage, and that's on you. But you did address our priorities as well as the traffic flow. And like Walter says, it may not be the ideal one, but it is the most practical and expeditious in the short term. And we have our parking, and we have our safety zones, and we have some quality of life restored for our residents. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I guess, Mr. ATN?
Yes, Mayor Protem, and good evening, council. Before I ask Ken Gill to come forward, I want to say that, as you heard from the residents, since the May 4th council meeting, we have met one-on-one with the area residents, with the Crestwood residents. And I would like to thank Councilman Riquito Delagarza, Councilman Bucknight, Andrew Young, and others who actually came and met with the residents to find a solution. Because the first thing we wanted to do was to identify what the issues were. What are the issues? And second, what are the solutions? So after meeting with them, we had two community meetings, and we came up with a solution that we think is a consensus. It is a consensus because the residents bought into it. They support it. Because when we met them, they said that the main problems were that was the speed of traffic, safety, or lack of a barrier between the sidewalks and the traffic. And then third was the lack of street parking. So we had several meetings with the residents, showed them the plans of what we proposed to do, and there was consensus on the restriping option. So the restriping action, option essentially does three things. One is that it removes the center lane or center turn lane. Two, it adds parking along the south side of the street. And then three, it adds a four-foot buffer on the north side of the roadway. So that's essentially to address the concerns of the residents. Again, we reached consensus because we met, we met, and we talked, and essentially, we came up with a good solution, which I think is a win-win as we go forward. So again, thank you to the council members and to the residents, Mr. Hawkins, Mr. Waller, who participated in the conversation, convening the meetings to come up with a good, community-oriented solution. So at this time, Mayor Protem and council, I would like to ask Ken Gill, our city engineer, to come forward and show the option that we came up with.
Where'd it go? Nick Clicker? Derek stole it. Okay. Real quick, this was in the last meeting. It's a collector's street. Back in 1960, it prohibited parking on Crestwood. And then, as Mike said, on May 13th, we met out there at Dick's parking lot to kind of go over an idea of option to get past this and move forward with a solution for everybody. Whoa, that was quick. That's what's out there now, center turn lane. And this is what we're proposing. This is starting at Laurent, and you would be looking east. What our plan is, plan is, is to still allow the left turn movement onto Laurent Street with a straight through going onto Crestwood, going westbound. As you're going east, what we did is, is we went ahead and made a left turn movement, left turn bay onto Ritama. It just worked out real simple. And from that point, we kicked that traffic over with a transition to where we start that parking lane, as you see on the south side. And we moved the center line stripe a little bit to the north. And I'll just keep going down with the next section. Again, this shows the consistency. We wanted to be consistent through this project as far as a traveling public. Biggest thing you want, the public wants to see when they're driving is consistency. They don't like in-and-outs, like going through a construction zone. And this is something that they would be familiar with, double yellow with the white edge lines. Keep going eastbound. As we approach Ben Jordan, we kicked that traffic back over into a transition so then we can allow the left turn onto Ben Jordan and then a straight through. Again, the solid double yellow stays fairly consistent through this. One of the things the citizens noted, and we'll take care of this during the striping, is if you're coming off on Crestwood going westbound, there's two lanes, and neither one of them is striped. And we're going to go ahead and make one a solid left turn only, and then put a dividing white line so that the straight coming across will stay in the same lane as you're going westbound. Couple other things. We're going to look at putting up the illuminated LED street speed limit signs. And what those are is like the stop signs. One of the things they'd asked is can we get them where they can record speeds? I don't know. I haven't checked into those, if they're available and what the longevity of those is as far as, you know, is it something that you have to recharge? Is it something you have to download? But we will check into that. But at the minimum, get that speed limit sign. It'll be the first ones we put up where they're illuminated around the edges. Estimated cost for those, $5,000 each, and then revise the striping. We've already checked with the striping contractor that did the initial. We're talking to him. And one of the most difficult things is, I say, remove existing striping by water blast. There's three contractors in the state of Texas that do that. So we're going to find out, talk to them. The current contractor said he can grind it, but he can use a minimal grind. One advantage we have on this road versus other ones where you have to grind is this street was not tined. In other words, it wasn't, didn't have tine marks where you, you know, if you want to get the stripe out, you got to grind it way down. This one was a burlap surface, so it may be easier to grind. We're going to check with him. We don't want to leave any marks. And then finally, we'd revise the traffic ordinance and adjust the signing to reflect parking and no parking. And that's it. And I've got one more thing after this that I want to kind of mention that has nothing related to Crestwood, if it's okay. The river prediction for this next, for this weekend is to get to 28.9 according to National Weather Service, which is pretty high up there. That's going to get flooding behind Mumu's over there on Water Street. It's happened before. So we're getting pumps ready. We've ordered pumps, and we've also ordered some for Second Street South, which is the area that if the floodgate, and we're checking floodgates tomorrow, but if the floodgates are working, everything's fine. If the floodgates are working and it rains and the river's up, that area does not drain. So we're setting up some pumps over there in preparation, just in case that happens this weekend. But I wanted to let y'all know we're already getting into the, getting the pumps ordered, checking the gates, getting ready for this coming weekend. That's it. Thank you.
At 28 at Moody Street Bridge?
28.9, yes, sir. And I looked at the weather, and they got hit good on the Guadalupe River Basin. And I looked at the weather, and they got hit good on the Guadalupe River Basin. So we're going to get some of that soon.
That's that Austin water?
Yes, Gonzalez and Seguin and Canyon Lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda?
You'll need to close that public hearing, please.
No more comments? We're going to close that public hearing for Crestwood.
The consent agenda, I will ask that staff is asking to remove Item D2 to be considered separately because of a need to nominate a council member to serve on the general, as a General Assembly Representative on the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission. So with your blessing, I'll go ahead and read the other items. So Item D1 is an adoption of minutes to the May 4th, 2021 city council meeting. Item D3 is a resolution awarding the rehabilitation of Waterwell Number 14 Project to Weisinger Incorporated of Conroe, Texas, in the amount of $147,022. And Item D4 is a resolution approving a five-year lease purchase agreement for eight Phillips Tempest Monitor and Defibrillators from Phillips North American in the amount of $345,959.13.
All those in favor? Or I need a motion?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second.
Point of order, except for Item D2?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, we'll go back and get Item D2 as a resolution, reappointing and appointing members to the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission. And this item, the resolution before you tonight calls for the appointment of two council members to serve on the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission's General Assembly, and one of those council members to also serve on the Board of Directors. Currently, Councilman Lofgren and Councilman Bucknight serve on the General Assembly, and Councilman Lofgren serves on the Board of Directors. Councilman Lofgren would like to continue serving on both the General Assembly and the Board of Directors, but Councilman Bucknight would like to give someone else the opportunity to serve on the General Assembly. The resolution also endorses Mayor Protem's solicitor service on the executive board as the immediate past president. Is anyone interested in serving on the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission General Assembly?
Maybe the future office holder of District III seat.
Ricky and Jan.
Dr. Young.
And Dr. Young.
Who's not here. We meet like once a month, on the last Wednesday of the month at 3:00. It goes from 3:00 to 5:00 most of the time.
That's the executive board, so she doesn't, it's just the General Assembly, right?
So the, it's a one time? Once a year?
Once a year.
And it's coming up this August 22nd? Okay, Ricky's going to accept that.
Thank you, Mr. De La Garza.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. De La Garza.
You said.
We heard you.
I forgot about you.
Yeah, you heard your name.
He's being very quiet, wouldn't he?
You said it about two seconds before I was going to, so I'm really glad you did. I'm not going to fight him.
Thank you, Ricky.
That's pretty sneaky.
Don't ever miss a meeting live.
So I move that we reappoint Mr. Lofgren for the two board positions, and Mr. De La Garza for the single position.
What about the endorsement?
Second.
I'm sorry?
And it's, is the endorsing Mayor Protem's solicitor service on the executive?
Oh, and, thank you. And I amend that to include the endorsement of Mayor Protem's lease to the executive board.
And you meant to second that, right?
Yes.
Mark seconded?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So we don't need this little paper tray?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Item number two, E2? No, oh, we, action items from council, okay.
Item E1 is a resolution approving a contract for architectural services for the fire station number one project with Brown Reynolds Watford Architects Incorporated of College Station, Texas, in the amount of $128,000.
Good evening, council.
Good, Ms. Laura.
Hello. This evening, we're going to go over the procurement method used for Fire Station One remodel, and then I'll pass over the presentation to Chief Fox, and he'll go over the project and kind of moving forward. Now, for this project, we used Government Code 2254, also known as the Professional Services Procurement Act. Now, with this code, we were able to issue a request for qualifications, also known as an RFQ, in order to get a pool of qualified architecture firms for the city to use. Under this code, we were able to select the most highly qualified firm to provide services on the basis of competency and their qualifications. After that, we're able to negotiate with the firm to, for a contract at a fair and reasonable price. We received five statements of qualifications, or SOQs, from various firms throughout the state of Texas. These SOQs were evaluated by the committee. The committee deemed all five qualifications as competent and qualified, so now the city has a pool of five architecture firms to use for future projects. The committee selected BRW out of College Station as the most qualified for this particular project. So they were selected for negotiations, and we selected them based on their technical expertise in fire station design and renovation, their ability to work within our budget parameters, and their previous experience with the city. The final negotiated price for this contract was $128,000. Are there any questions as far as the procurement goes?
You said that they have prior experience with the city?
Yes.
Did they help us with the other fire stations?
Yes. I believe that was for Fire Station Six.
Three, six, two, and four.
Six, two, and four, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions as far as the procurement goes? No? Okay, great. I'm going to go in and pass it over to Chief Fox. Thank you.
Thank you, Lotte. I appreciate it. Yes, previous experience with stations four, two, and six, and had great success with those projects. And as Lotte mentioned, the technical expertise of designing a fire station to be wind-hardened, wind-rated to 135 miles on the coast, they showed tremendous experience with that process. Kind of what these architectural services will be provided by this company is schematic design, which is really that programming, looking at the space and figuring out how it can be used, as well as a probable cost to the project. And then you get into the design and development phase, whereas that's your conceptual drawings and things of that nature, and getting more into that design, that visual look of what's going to, that the project's going to look like. And then we move into construction documents, which they'll provide, and that's the meat and potatoes, if you will, for the bidding process. That is what the contractor, the construction contractor, will use to develop that bidding format or cost. So the construction documents are very important. Those are what the contractor for the construction piece will use to produce their bid. And then lastly, construction administration. They'll be working with the City of Victoria as to manage this project and to oversee this project and make sure that the contractor for construction is following those construction documents.
Chief Fox?
Yes, ma'am.
That's the station on Goodwin?
Yes, ma'am, on Goodwin and Navarro, kind of right there at that intersection, 606 East Goodwin.
Okay, are we going to incorporate anything from that building that, or you remember the street that we closed and we bought out?
Yes, ma'am.
So that's going to be part of this?
Yes, ma'am. We closed the street, and we are also part of this project is the building of an approximately 2,400-square-foot storage facility, warehouse facility, and that will be accessed from that street.
Okay.
If that makes sense. And that's within the property of the fire station.
Right, right. I remember that.
And that's part of the scope of this project as well.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Kind of a timeline, tonight, if council approves, we'll award the contract for architectural services. We'll begin design in June. We actually have our kickoff meeting tomorrow, if all goes well, and we'll start that design process. And then hopefully in August, we'll be bidding out the construction contract and awarding that construction contract in late September. Just want to highlight part of this process is, we've talked about, we're going to, we recommend awarding the contract to BRW, and we will be using a competitive seal proposal method for the construction portion of the project. And this RFQ process for the architect allowed us to generate a substantial pool of qualified architects for other future city projects, and we're already using one of those architects on another city project. So the process was very successful in generating some very qualified architects for not just this project, but for others. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. We also, I think, have our architects on the line as well, if you have any technical questions that I can't answer.
I have one, Chief Fox.
Yes, sir.
In the contract, and I admittedly skimmed through it quickly, I didn't see any delivery dates in there for items. But yet, in your presentation, you said that you're going to bid the project in August.
That's our tentative timeline, and that's what we're going to set, and then that's what, how the contract reads, is to be determined by the owner and the architect, is to determine those timelines. And that's kind of our tentative timeline at this point, is how we want this to play out as far as the schedule. And that's what we've communicated with the architect during negotiations.
So from a procurement standpoint, question is, why don't we put that specifically in the contract? Because I know we haven't on Crestwood Construction either for design.
Right.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Yes, sir. The question was, why do we not have deliverable dates in the professional services agreement?
It's a good question, and we certainly could. We'll look into that in the future.
Okay.
Thank you. Great question. Great point. And Thomas, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the first time we use the architect contract format for this type of service?
Absolutely. This was part of the effort that Raleigh McCoy had been pushing us towards, to use the professional AIA contracts for these projects. Of course, even Mayor McCoy, as an architect, understood that those contracts need substantial revision from the form documents that are developed for national projects, or projects across the nation, excuse me. So it took quite a while for us to work through that process. It was the first time we had done that, and I appreciate Chief Fox's patience and BRW's patience while we worked through that process with outside attorneys.
Thank you, Thomas. Appreciate that.
Well, I move that we approve Item E1.
Second.
Been first and seconded to approve Item E1. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Council.
I've got to turn my microphone on. Item E2 is a designation of Victoria Farmer's Market located at 2805 North Navarro as a farmer's market, in accordance with Section 14-58C of the city code. I apologize, Mayor Protem. I told April I would read this item since she had to move to the dais, and then I got pulled away on other.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. Section 1458, A and B of the city code requires a farmer's market to be designated by the city council. The Victoria Farmer's Market located at 2805 North Navero is asking for the designation to operate as a farmer's market, and has submitted their bylaws and market rules and regulations as required by the city code. The farmer's market has been certified, as mentioned by Ms. Byrd, has been certified by the Texas Department of Agriculture since 2016. It's a very short presentation. If you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them.
This is just kind of a housekeeping issue?
Sure. Yes, sir, it is. The, there was a slight change to the name of the farmer's market a few years ago, and the designation includes the location. And so the previous, the farmer's market is sponsored by the Food Bank, and so their previous designation was at the downtown location. So we want to change it and correct the name. So it's just a housekeeping.
Well, I move we adopt this agenda item.
Second.
Been first and seconded to accept E2. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion carries. City manager reports.
Yes, Mayor Protem, we do have three city managers report today, and the first one is from our city manager, Jesus Garza, who's joining us via Zoom.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome. I really wanted to be part of tonight's meeting, so I liked the weather outside today, so I figured I'd join you from outside.
You're a big part of our meeting today.
I'm what?
I said you're a big part of our meeting today.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. I'm a big fly on the floor. All right, so the first topic today is an update on the American Rescue Plan. It's obviously, it's obviously a topic of high interest, and rightfully so, because we are slated to get a substantial amount of money, and so naturally, a lot of questions are surrounding how we can use it. And so I hope to get some, provide some clarity on that tonight, and seek some direction from the council. I want to briefly just show you a little bit of what I shared the last time we talked about this topic, which was in March, just to remind you of how large a stimulus package this was, and the portion that is coming to local communities. At that same council meeting, we mentioned that the City of Victoria was slated to receive a little over $50 million, and we provided a brief overview on the allowable uses on the categories that were included in that legislation, if you will. We knew at the time that there was going to be further clarification needed. There was many questions surrounding, you know, what defines revenue loss? How do you define infrastructure? Naturally, many local governments wanted to wait to seek clarity. And one of the ways in which the cities decided to seek some of that clarity was to collectively provide some input to the National League of Cities. And you should have a copy of that National League of Cities letter in your read files this evening, just for your future reference, that highlight a lot of those clarifications that they tried to seek from the Department of Treasury. So some of those range from the disbursement process, to how do you define revenues, how do you define recent fiscal years, since cities all across the country are on different cycles. Some start December 1st, some start June 1st, you know, we start October 1st. So there was just some clarity needed in that sense. One of the things that I hadn't even caught myself until I read this letter was that in that original legislation, it used the word "or." It was water, sewer, or broadband. And so one of the big questions in this letter was, do you have to just choose one? Or could you actually choose projects in multiple of these categories? And so little things like that needed to be clarified. There was some uncertainty behind whether stormwater or wastewater was included, since the verbiage originally, again, was only water, sewer, or broadband. There was no reference to stormwater or wastewater. And once you get into the weeds of these elements, there are major differences. Naturally, there were a lot of questions about compliance and tracking, and so that was sort of hopefully cleared up some. And there were many, many specific instances, or specific scenarios that were submitted from different cities that are included in that packet. Thankfully, a lot of those questions were answered recently when the Department of Treasury actually announced the formal coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds program. They announced that on May 10th, which is just last week. That confirmed that there was $350 billion allocated to cities, states, counties, et cetera. The City of Victoria's allocation actually decreased by almost a million, decreased slightly. It went from 15.07 to 14.5. And so, you know, even just clarifications around the disbursement came out of this process. We still are slated to receive half of that this month at some point, with the remaining half this time next year. And still can use it up until the end of 2024. The categories on the right are the very same categories that we shared in March, but now the guidance is, confirms that we have some broad flexibility with this. And so I wanted to quote one of the sections that were, one of the sentences that was in the executive summary of the document that came out from the Department of Treasury that reads, "Within the categories of eligible uses, recipients have broad flexibility to decide how best to use this funding to meet the needs of their communities." And so if they're leaving it up to us, then all right, let's have the conversation. And I'm going to take each one of these just very briefly. I'm not going to read every single bullet, but I did want to provide the information to you and the public on what examples they provided in these categories. And so, for example, under the supporting public health expenditures, obviously the things that you might think of associated with vaccination programs, PPE, they talk about enforcement of public health orders, public communication efforts, which I think was huge, because once we, once we start going through all Because once we, once we start going through all of these, you know, obviously, we need to start asking ourselves which ones are relevant to us. And so something like public communications efforts is relevant to us since we obviously have a PIO department. But it also goes on to talking about capital investments in public facilities to meet pandemic operational needs. And so that's also something that we should keep in mind since that's something that is more relevant to us. We obviously don't directly oversee the Health Department. So many of these instances are more appropriate for the Health Department themselves. But there are references to some elements that I'll touch on a little bit later that apply to potential investments in the community. And those can range around mental health, substance misuse, other behavior of health services, which can be very broad or interpreted to be very broad as well. And so it's not just COVID, as you can see. There's a lot of elements that are tied into this public health definition that's included in here. To address the negative economic impacts, it was very specific with some examples. So, for example, you could utilize some of the phones for unemployment through job training. It talks about households facing food, housing, or other financial insecurities. It talks about supporting small businesses through loans, grants, or in-kind services, technical assistance. It really is pretty broad as it relates to its uses on addressing economic impacts. It very specifically hits on the tourism, travel, and hospitality sectors, which were somewhat excluded from the original plan from last year. And so they were very specific in ensuring that that was included this go-around. There wasn't a lot of specific examples given in this category, but we feel or we believe that that was intentional to allow us, the local, local community, the flexibility to determine what is considered, what is part of tourism, what is part of travel, what is part of hospitality. Because obviously, every community is going to be different in terms of what drives tourism, what drives travel. And so I think they're intentionally leaving some of that flexibility for us. We know that there's also some component of it that negatively impact a lot of organizations or cities out there. We were very fortunate that we weren't one of those where we had to make any drastic cuts to our operations. But this addresses the ability to hire those folks back had we done that. Lost revenue is pretty straightforward, which is intended just to plug some of those holes compared to fiscal year 19. That would be the fiscal year that we would utilize in order to come up with that calculation. It does actually also include some language if we wanted to include some automatic escalators to receive even more revenue under this category. And that was a conversation that Gilbert and I had, and we decided to solely focus, and you'll see in a few slides, solely focus the conversation on just straight up our revenue loss. Since at the end of the day, $14.5 million isn't a lot of money. We wanted to make sure that we had plenty of money to have a holistic conversation on all the community's needs. Premium pay for essential workers, this was a very, very broad category. You know, obviously, originally, the classification of essential employee, you know, last year was in question. This gave a lot, a lot of examples that go beyond the government employees, if you will. This touches private sector employees that are also considered essential. And so the implication through, through this specific category is that local governments can issue grants to employers that hire these individuals to be able to provide premium pay. And we're beginning to kind of see some of that in some other communities. Water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, really, the only, my only comment on this category was that they did now formally include wastewater and stormwater infrastructure to be determined to what extent stormwater is included. We believe their intent was to simply capture the distribution system since in many communities, that stormwater actually feeds to, say, a wastewater treatment plant or some other type of treatment facility. And so we're not certain if it means just that part or if it means literally any drainage type of project. And so there's still some, some clarification that's needed on, on stormwater. One of the things that really, really came out of nowhere, really, was a very specific you, a potential use for the hardest-hit communities. And so the formal language that came out last week very specifically talked about how many folks in the country, especially in low-income communities, by far suffered some of the greatest challenges or setbacks associated with COVID. And so they intentionally have now allowed a broad use of these funds within QCTs, which are qualified census tracts. We're familiar with those since those are the census tracts where we already fund programs through our, through our, through our traditional CDBG program. But now this, like, this direction is now saying that we can use part of this $14.5 million to also address some issues within QCTs ranging from educational disparities, investments in housing. I very specifically pulled out the terms of homeless and affordable housing since those are obviously topics that we've discussed in the past and that, to a certain extent, are ongoing. And so that, that, that was new. Again, that kind of came out of nowhere with the new guidance that came out last week. So clearly with that, it's clear that the eligible expenditures are much broader and more robust than originally anticipated. That, of course, has pros and cons. The pro, of course, is that it's placing a lot of onus on us to determine what's important for our organization and for our community. And that's obviously a lot of responsibility on our part and a responsibility that we want to take very seriously. And one of the very first things that we noticed right off the bat was that if we want to do something right as it relates to this program, that we're realistically going to probably need some staff to help with it. The, the guidance that came out last week also confirmed that some of the funds can be utilized to either contract out or hire your own personnel to help manage any programs that you, that we might come up with stemming from these funds. The next item is going to be Katie talking about her grants administration vision. And so she'll hit on that a little bit, because we do think that if we go down that path, it makes sense to build out that team under Katie and keep it separate from our traditional CDBG program. Keep in mind that our traditional CDBG staff within Planning and Development Services falls under HUD guidelines, which are very, very strict and restrictive to a certain extent. This program doesn't have to follow that. And also keep in mind that that CDBG staff has also taken upon, taken it upon themselves to do these rental mortgage assistance programs that is added work for them. And so really, just adding even more work to that team is just not realistic. And so in order to separate and people not get confused about, you know, what's HUD and what's not HUD, we think the best approach is to hire some personnel under our grants administration division. But more to that when, when Katie speaks. So with that responsibility of allocating these funds, what staff would like to recommend is as that, is that as a starting point, we allocate funds into buckets or categories. And then that way, we at least reach consensus on, on, on the big picture categories and buckets before we take a deeper dive into the weeds of how we want to spend some of those. Because the uses, the allowable uses are much broader than originally anticipated, what we'd like to recommend is that for those relevant categories, that we establish committees made up of potentially one or two council members, some staff, and some relevant stakeholders, so that we can truly collectively work on how best to invest these dollars and hopefully make the greatest impact. Again, we take that response, that onus that the federal government has placed on us, we take it very serious. And we feel that the only way we can reach a really good recommendation to you is if we have a collective process, an inclusive collective process on determining that. But first, I want to have a brief conversation on how, on what we'd like to recommend in terms of these buckets. We've talked about broadband, and so we'd like to allocate $2 million towards broadband. We've talked about utility infrastructure. We'd like to create a bucket of $3 million for that. In speaking with Gilbert, we think $3 million is a good figure in terms of loss of revenue for us. And so we'd like to obviously allocate that amount. Organizational needs, that's for our use internally. And so you may recall from one of the previous slides where we talked about facility improvements and really just other things. And so we have needs ourselves, you know, ranging from, you know, buying equipment to, let's say, for, for example, making permanent, having glass. I don't want to use the word shields, but having glass in between our employees and the public. Currently, we're still using some of those temporary freestanding kind of plastic shields, if you will. And so we'd like to make some investments in some areas such as utility billing, for example, and, and build out some more permanent glass barriers similar to how you might find in the city secretary's office. So we'd like to address some of that. Community grants, this is where we would hit on potentially helping communities in our QCTs or much broader agencies that provide services. Tourism, tourism, travel, and industry, we're recommending $1 million. Economic development, we're recommending $1 million. And then the administration overhead, which I mentioned, we would utilize to just hire some staff to help administer any programs that come out of this. We'd like to allocate half a million dollars towards that. I can't really see you, and so I'll kind of throw it out to see if there are any initial reactions to, to this part of the conversation.
I have some, and this is just my approach to looking at the whole bucket of money. I can't say that any of these allocations are correct without knowing holistically as a group here, what we determine need to be the important projects and see how much they cost and what we can afford and what we want to do with impactfulness. And then it goes into a bucket that meet, that follows the guidelines. Because I don't know if, you know, for loss of revenue, it jumps out at me as, I think, Mr. Rania and Mr. Garza did a great job on scaling back expenditures and met our loss of revenue by lower expenditures and pushing projects. So this $3 million is like going into the general fund for what? And there's nothing particular for it. It's just one-time money in the general fund. That one I have just a hard burn with. But overall, I'd rather attack, attack it from here specifically what we want to go do, and let's then put it in the buckets, and it just ends up what it is when we decide what's important.
I, I agree. It should be, we find the projects first. But back to the lost revenue, we did postpone capital projects, which it'd be nice if we could have some more capital projects done. But I too think we need a project, we need a list. It may be we want to spend more in a certain area than in another area. We talked about water a lot, about resiliency with the water system. We may end up wanting to spend more. I think we need a big list before we decide how much we're going to spend in each little bucket.
I'd like to see some type of list with priorities also.
Well, that's, I think it'd be up for us to prioritize it.
Yeah.
With input, of course, from staff to, they're going to know the better details. But I think it's up, up to us to set that direction for, as far as this is what the council would like to be tackled.
Well, and I think, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, go ahead.
Part, part of, that's part of what we want to try and accomplish. And the reason why we wanted to approach, and one of the things that we could do, quite frankly, is still set up some committees without necessarily having, you know, buckets or dollar signs attached to it to be able to come up with some projects, right? Because part of, part of the, or one of the benefits, I should say, of going into it with some type of broad category is that it at least kind of shrinks a little bit what those potential projects might look like, right? Because if the direction is to simply just to come up with a master list of projects and then worry about the categories later, well, then, quite frankly, I mean, the, the, that's just too, there's just too many projects, right? We would need some direction from you before we come up with a list of projects on the types of projects that you want lists of, right? And so what I'm in essence saying is, you know, these are the, the categories of list of projects that we need to work on, right? Because I don't want to put staff or myself in a position where, you know, we assume that, you know, you might be interested in a project, you know, that is, for instance, you know, one of the allowable uses is to create grant programs to employers of that, hire essential workers, for example, right? Well, you know, if we don't have some guidance, that wouldn't fit any of these categories because we're in essence potentially suggesting that, you know, we can't fund everything with $14.5 million. So the benefit of creating some categories, even if we don't attach dollar signs to them, to the buckets, is that it helps narrow the types of projects list that we come up with. Otherwise, it's just a free-for-all in terms of projects, and we're kind of left just, you know, assuming.
I could buy into the recommended categories first, but not the dollar amounts to it.
So can I?
Right. So we could, so we could, we could do that. And, you know, the, the way that I had thought about it was, and we can create more, you know, categories and more committees, obviously. But my thought was, if we can agree on the categories, then we go in and do the hard work, which would be coming up with the list of projects, as you just mentioned. And that's a process that I think needs to include some council representation, staff, relevant stakeholders. I think it would be a very difficult conversation to have, including all of council together, right? Because it's just so much. So I think if, if we were to have one or two council members in each, you know, committee or topic, if you will, that might help facilitate, you know, having meetings to then make, you know, broad recommendations to council, like in a workshop setting of sorts. But anyway, but that was some of the thinking behind that. And so we could, again, very easily just eliminate, you know, the actual dollar sign, if you will, and then simply just take the approach of committees and topics. And like I said, we could have more topics than just these four.
Well, one of the, one of the things that, excuse me, that I've started thinking about as we looked at these categories, and I agree that the numbers kind of hold you back. But we've had some discussion about, there are some infrastructure needs that the city has of its buildings that became apparent during COVID but are also apparent. And there are areas that we don't have necessarily budgeted, and they wouldn't necessarily fit very easily into a bond program. And that type of project appeals to me as one that would be good to use this money for. I think you called it organizational needs, and I was thinking that it kind of fit there. And my only other thought is that I don't disagree with broadband. But I think under these categories, we could probably squeeze broadband into broadband utility structure and economic development. So we've got some flexibility in some of our programs. But my thought is some of the, the things that we would use this money for are things that are difficult to find other everyday money for and difficult to, to raise money for.
Yeah.
Got it. Yeah, that makes sense.
From a process standpoint, kind of how I was thinking is that we would, maybe we'd take these categories, and as homework, as council members, we come up with, you know, I don't, if you have 50 projects you want to put out there and put in each category. And then whether it's a small group that just tackles, you know, each category and ranks them out and says, here's where we think the priorities are and how we feel, feel about it to present to the rest of council, and just kind of whittle through the list. And some things are going to fall off, like, for instance, I think something I would put on here is off-channel reservoir interconnect piping.
Right.
We've talked about it for years. It's just never been a huge priority. But it's something I would want to consider, and it may not make the list. But it's one of those that's always been out there. And I don't know if that's been on anybody else's radar, but.
It's a really good, it's on what I'm saying, the things that.
All of us are going to have those that are stuck in the back of our heads from sitting up here and talking about items that we haven't gotten to fund. And this money should be impactful and, to steal Mr. Garza's term, transformational as much as possible, not nickel and dimed away.
And they would all have, they would all have to be like the one-time projects. We can't use this money to, you know, spend again or to add a project that is going to cost us again. So it's like one-time projects. That's what I see this money as.
Right.
Mostly, yes, but there are some elements, because keep in mind, we have to spend the money through, through the end of 2024. And so for us, that would hit potentially three fiscal years. It would hit '22, '23, and '24. And so, for example, if we hire some, some staff to kind of help just manage some of these potential programs, well, you know, that, that would be a recurring expense for at least those three years, spread out over those fiscal years, for example. But yeah, I was, you know, the majority of them are obviously one-time expenditures. I will say that on the loss of revenue part, so the proposed budget for fiscal year '22, and Gilbert can correct me if I'm wrong, but, but my understanding is that, that $3 million is, for the most part, already being taken into account into the proposed budget for next year, simply to make us whole. So if, if, if you're thinking that, you know, this $3 million for loss of revenue is money that, you know, we transfer over to fund balance and then get to reallocate, while technically that is true. While technically that is true, we're reallocating it to be able to continue operating without having to cut anything uh, next year.
Another thing I would add is that if you look at your CIP funding from general fund, it's higher than normal. I made some assumptions that we use some of the money through the CIP process from this loss of revenue. So I just want to put that two cents out there. So it's 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 assumption working with the budget. It's it's not final. But uh, if you look at the budget right now with the CIP, you're looking slightly over eight million dollars. Well, eight million dollars didn't come from the general fund just by itself, so uh, keep that in mind. So it's one time. And the last point I would say, I'm sorry. I know we're throwing out all these projects and all due respect. You know, there's some engineering studies and all this stuff, construction bids and all that, but again, I want to reiterate that this money has to be spent by twenty twenty four. So if we're going to do a building or some type of heavy infrastructure thing, and it's get started, that's my point. Thank you.
For clarification and building on that, December thirty first, twenty twenty four, or I don't know if it's the payment date of twenty twenty four. But every last dollar has to be spent by that time, not allocated and committed.
The clever, uh, I have a war, I mean, I got a question out there, because in the previous COVID nineteen, it was a contract. In other words, I have to have that solid contract that's obligated. But I'm still got to get that confirmed. The last COVID
Yeah, this one, this one seems to be more focused on the spent by that day. But it's, but it's also contract based, right? So for example, if we end up you know, granting a grant to, let's say, a nonprofit, well, we would have to grant those funds, you know, prior prior to that, but that's still some of the gray area that we're still trying to seek some clarification on.
So it would be all right in that instance to grant it, and that constitutes the spending by the city where, but our contract with them on that grant would stipulate that they needed to be under contract for whatever their expenditure is by twenty twenty four or something.
Well, you know, our our intention, without having a specific project in mind, was to actually, if we do go down the route route of providing grants to third party organizations, is to actually place a deadline on that, so that if that particular project that they get the grant for doesn't happen, we're able to utilize the excess funds in time by the end of twenty twenty four for other purposes.
Okay.
In that way, we kind of further maximize the usage of the funds, and everybody's kind of on a time clock of sorts. But that was kind of our just our internal discussion on that, because we don't want to just allocate a bunch of funds. And it either either A, take forever for something to happen, or B, it not happen. And then us not have the ability to take those those funds and use them for something else.
That makes sense.
And if our deadline is the end of twenty twenty four, then their deadline is going to have to be before that.
I think while we're doing our homework as council, I would hopefully have staff doing the same thing um, with lists of items and needs and see if we can't marry them up. We might all be on the same page.
Yeah, and and that's what the the committees will present the opportunity to do that. I'm not sure if anybody has any major um concerns with the categories that we've included. You know, again, forget about the the allocation of money, but just simply just focused on the categories. Does anybody have any specific issue with the ones that we've included? Does anybody have any additional categories that you'd like to include?
Can you explain the economic development category? Because in your previous presentation, I didn't quite see that listed anywhere, and I skimmed the the fact sheet that you gave us a copy of uh, last or last week or this weekend. And I'm confused on that part.
My, I think I went too far. So my intention was for um, ah, sorry. My intention was for it to um, be part of a conversation about um, potentially supporting small businesses if the committee wants to do that, um, since those are allowable programs. Or anything associated with um some economic relief programs. I know that it's been talked about in the past. I know that there's been conversations, you know, specifically about what to do with the capital funds with people fund. And we don't have anything specific in mind, but I simply thought, well, let's bring it up as a category. And if anybody has any clever ideas about, you know, how to use some of these funds, then maybe we can utilize it for that, because again, there's also great flexibility. So for example, the innovative collective collaborative effort that UHV is undertaking, for example, that they've that they've seeked and requested participation from VSTDC for, for example. My thought is, well, you know, if we didn't want to fund that out of VSTDC, we could fund it out of this, since it's economic development. And it supports, you know, potentially supports the uh, just business.
That's a good idea.
Community. And so it's really just those types of kind of outside the box. You know, I know there's been conversations about, you know, whether this community wants to establish a permanent revolving loan fund or not. You know, maybe this presents the opportunity to do that, so we don't have to use our own money to do to to test test that. I know that there's been some we've received some commentary mainly on social media and and through personal contacts that, you know, as we focus more on downtown and supporting businesses downtown, you know, what about the businesses that are in downtown, for example? And so this might create opportunities to establish broader programs, even if it's just for a couple of years, that um, you know, just creates opportunities for more. So there's really all sorts of things that could be talked about under that economic development part. But that's kind of where I was headed with that.
Okay.
Are are we able to use this money for plain old vanilla needs that we already have that um, that COVID hasn't made worse, like the condition of some of our streets?
Sorry, hold on. Did you say streets?
Yes. Are we able to use this for um, streets that just have the need whether whether we have COVID or not?
Um, I I hate to give you an answer of saying it depends. Because it just depends, you know, for example, if we just wanted to say, okay, we want to use it for residential streets. I'm not sure, but if we wanted to tie um, economic development into it, you know, there might be an opportunity to to spend some dollars for public infrastructure associated with with that. And so I think it just all depends on how we um, use it and spend it and the purpose for it.
And so maybe to some extent, it might depend on the classification of street. Maybe not a residential, but more um, what are they called arterial or something like that.
Collector. Well, I can see it as going into the the loss of revenue, right? It's three million.
There you go.
It's going to CIP projects. So essentially, it is going towards that, but it's
Right. It's just detouring.
Yep.
Got it.
Right. I was going to try and say that word circuitous, but I don't know if I ever get it right, so.
We like the word indirect.
Indirect, that's right. That's a nice word. Thank you, Thomas.
What about the parts?
Anyway, so going back to my question, if there are any categories that you'd like to add, just let us know. I mean, you don't have to, you know, provide that feedback now, but you know, just keep that in mind for now. I'll proceed with that minimum. These categories we've presented are okay. And if we want to add some later, then we can add those later. For now, if it's okay with everybody, we'll proceed with, you know, everybody will doing their homework on coming up with projects within these categories, setting up, excuse me, some some committees. It would, again, I don't need this this people to decide now, but something to think about is, you know, if if you have a specific interest and want to be involved in a specific category, I still think that's probably the best use of everybody's time, is if council kind of divides themselves up into categories to at minimum come up with, help staff come up with preliminary list, and then obviously eventually share everything with council, but um, I think just spreading everybody out might might help the cause a little bit.
Are we using, are we using these four categories or the seven or the seven?
We have
Yeah.
So we, so we, we have some additional categories here. I simply included these because I thought these would be maybe of the highest interest to council. Because, for example, organizational needs, I assume council is probably mostly going to depend on staff for that. Um, and we can present those to all of council once we recommend, you know, the whole thing. Loss of revenue, you know, we can, we can probably very specifically come up with with what those um are being directed to, if you will. So that's why I kind of focused on 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 the ones that I thought would garner more stakeholder involvement, if you will, and community involvement. So that's why I included, for example, VSTDC with economic development, because I figured, well, they're our closest thing that we have to a board that's involved with economic development. I included the tourism advisory board, since, you know, council's already appointed this board. And 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 have already picked these people to serve as the voice of the tourism sector, and so why not get them involved? And so on the community needs part, that's probably a little bit more robust, because that can go a million different directions in terms of the types of services that can be offered, but we obviously have our CDBG staff that could be could could assist with that. And then through conversations, we can start discerning what's priority, what's not. We know based off of the the verbiage included in here that for the most part, these are probably going to be services that range from food distribution to sheltering to mental health services. And so we we know that that a lot of it is intended towards um, those aspects. And so we can certainly include stakeholders within those areas to provide some input on what those needs are, to then make a recommendation to council on expending those funds. We obviously also have the Victoria Broadband Commission already working, which is which is why I didn't include it here, because we already have the Victoria Broadband Commission that Derek spearheading, that's already looking to make recommendations to council. And so I didn't think there was a need to duplicate uh, a different group to look into broadband. So that was the reasoning behind focusing on those four.
The four committees, but I'm planning on coming up with a list and put a temporary category next to it to send you.
Okay, that's fine. And like I said, if there is other categories
No, those other eight categories on the next slide.
Okay.
You know, which committee, the eight categories. I'm planning that I'm going to send you a list of different projects, and I'm going to put, I think it falls in this category. What committee it goes to, I'll leave that to y'all. But and just this is where I think it would go, and, you know, it may not fit, just may not meet the criteria. And the other
Sure.
big point I want to make is council needs community input on this.
Yes.
Please contact us. Y'all are going to have some of the best ideas as well. And um, love to hear from people. I don't care how off the wall the project may sound, let's let's look at everything.
And one of the things that that we could look at doing as well is that we could look at um, establishing community surveys of sorts, if we want to go to that extent.
I don't know what you mean.
Put surveys online.
Ask them.
Or, yeah, maybe survey is not the right word, but, you know, just having a a maybe a questionnaire where a web page, for example, with information where people can go in and input their suggestion. Or just their feedback.
Right. That would be good.
So we can look at exploring something like that. And, you know, and press releasing that out with categories and things of that sort, and really just get people's input. We can share that with with stakeholders as well. So we could probably develop something something pretty comprehensive if if the direction is, you know, to go that route, really focus on community engagement and input. Okay, so with that, um.
Can we take a five minute break?
Yeah, let me just wrap this up real quick.
Okay.
So um, I guess you could ignore some of these aspects of it. We'll follow up, but the original intent was to kind of move on some of this fairly quickly over the next two months, so that we can start incorporating some elements into the fiscal year twenty two budget. We obviously can always amend the budget if we don't have anything specific over the next couple of months. The elements that probably are a little bit easier for us to grasp in time for fiscal year twenty two are probably the ones that are more of our own needs, right? Our operational needs. Some of those will be much easier and much quicker for us to figure out. In June, Derek will set up some meetings with you to update you on broadband. And so we anticipate uh, being able to make a decision on whether we need to allocate any amount towards broadband um, over the next couple of months. And that might help, you know, provide some clarity behind whether, you know, that money is needed or not. It just kind of just depends what we want to do. Which obviously, if that money isn't needed for broadband, then it just opens up being able to spend more for other categories, if you will. And so there are a couple of things that we think we can hone in on over the next couple of months. Gilbert already mentioned that the revenue losses already incorporated into fiscal year twenty two for some capital projects. So my point here is we're supposed to get a little over seven million this month. Some of that we think we can already allocate for fiscal year twenty two. My original hope was to maybe even have some of these committee meetings over the next couple of months to figure some of those community wide programs out. But if that needs to wait till later, that's fine, too.
Yeah, I was going to throw in, I mean, they've got the three million in uh, loss of revenue that they've indicated is already, they're working it into the budget. As a council, can we reach a consensus that 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 part of what their plan is is okay? Or not? And uh, if so, if there's seven million coming, three million would be coming out of that. So initially, we'd be looking at allocating four million this year and then the rest of it next year. But um, you know, I'd like to at least give staff that much comfort that they could move forward on uh, that allocation.
Can we do that during the C CIP update?
Yeah, absolutely, because obviously if it's not, then we have to trim some of that back.
I want to see how it's being allocated.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so do I hit the gravel?
All right, so I'm done, and you can you can recess for a break if you like.
We're going to take a five minute recess.
And Ms. Katie Connolly, our grants administrator, will provide the update.
Hi, Katie. Sorry you had to wait so long.
That's okay. No problem. Good evening, mayor, pro temp, and council. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the grant activity that's been going on since I was hired on in approximately August, and I say approximately because there were definite dates, but I transitioned, obviously, from legal over into grants. And what I want to do, because I haven't talked to you, and I haven't talked to you at all about, since the position was created, since I filled it, or since I started in it, and I haven't, I wanted to start with kind of a review of what I do, if this isn't working. I pushed this button, right? That doesn't work.
Wiggle the battery.
Do it manually.
It worked before.
Oh, is it gonna work now?
I wiggle the battery.
You wiggle, okay. So, excuse me. So much more goes into grant administration than writing grants. Since I started, I've collaborated with staff on four grants that have been submitted, and there's one in progress now. And so writing, obviously, is extremely important, but I don't, that doesn't come up every day. I don't spend all day, every day, tick, tick, tick. Every day is research into funding opportunities. It's an incredible amount of reading, because there's always the, the notice of funding opportunity, there's always a lot of guidance, there's a lot of best practices. I've been working to build professional network for connections with funders, connections with other grant professionals, connections with city staff, a lot of meetings, a lot of committees, a lot of meetings, a lot of information. What are we doing? What do we need to do? I do some management of current grants. I don't manage all of them, because a lot of them are established grants that have staff assigned to them already, but I do management of some of our current grants, in addition to being liaison with our grant contractors on some of our larger projects. And of course, a lot of training, a lot of training for grants in general, a lot of training for federal grants, because there's a huge amount of training that goes along with that. And my membership to the Grant Professionals Association has also provided me the opportunity for free, ongoing, continuing education on things like best practices, insider information on things like the best places to find funding opportunities, other topics such as indirect cost rates and financial management. And so what I've learned from, from training, from networking, from the experience of other grant professionals, and from a, a lot of the reading and research that I've done, I can share with you some of the critical features of competitive proposals and successful projects and programs. One of the first things is partnerships are very important. They're important to all funders, they're very important to federal funders. This is their, this is their value added. From their perspective, partnerships are a BOGO deal. They're going to get the widest possible benefit from their funding. So that's why, that's one, a big feature for a competitive proposal is, is a partnership. Additionally, alignment with strategic plans, comprehensive plans, master plans, anything that, that, any kind of project or proposal that you can come up with that speaks to something that you've already established is something that you want to do, then that's really competitive. But the most competitive hit a sweet spot of an overlap of the funder's intent for the funding. Why are they providing this funding? They have criteria. Plus your strategic goals, your master plans, and then, of course, community needs. So we, the most competitive proposals are hitting that, right in that, that sweet spot. And a, a lot of the training that I've done, too, has helped with how to find funding opportunities that hit that, which kind of boils down to a lot of advanced search techniques, but also some secret tips and tricks on where to look. Building economic resiliency is another very important feature of competitive proposals. Funders from state and local, federal, state and federal sources want to help local communities not need to rely on state and federal funds as an eventuality. That's a kind of a concept more than a, a true reality, because we're talking about federal programs, but that's why there's been a lot of mitigation funding available, specifically in our area, because this funding is addressing some of the disasters that we've had. Hurricane Harvey, COVID-19, of course, everyone has had that, but also our recent winter storm. There's funding coming available, there's some already, and there's, there's more coming available to help with that. Some other key things, project readiness. And one of the things I wanted to mention about project readiness is the length of time it takes to get from authorizing the city to apply for a grant and actually starting to dig in the ground. And my example there is, in late 2018, council authorized the city to apply for the C D B G disaster relief grants that includes our infrastructure project for the floodgates and the flood buyout program. We will be potentially advertising bids for the floodgates next month. So that started in late 2018. It takes an incredible amount of time just to get to where the funder's recommending an award. You have to go through contract negotiation process, then you have to start the work, and there's a huge amount of planning and engineering that goes on in the background, particularly with, obviously, construction project. But it takes a really long time, and so that's kind of why I think a lot of these funders are looking for project readiness, because if you're not even anywhere close to being ready to do it, well, then it's gonna be a, a really, really long time before there's any results seen. And then the ability to quantify and measure things are, are really key features. A lot of funders specifically mention SMART goals, some of them just imply they want to see the specific measurable, achievable, realistic, and timely, because they want to look back and be able to see that what they've, their investment has produced the result that you said it was going to produce. So it's important to be able to say, well, we did this specifically. So that brings me to our current funding, and I wanted to say that this is more kind of conceptual, because it's obviously too small to read. It's too small to read, and I had to cram all the acronyms in there, but what I wanted this to show was that we have a little over $10 million right now in current funding. Ninety-six percent of that is covered by the funders, and that's about 14 programs right now, for our 4% local investment. That varies, obviously, from, from project to project. Some projects, we put in a lot more, some projects, not as much. And so some of our current programs include, we have seven public safety programs and projects. We have three very large public works projects, all of which are disaster relief or mitigation-related, with one more with the library windows project that's, falls under building and equipment. And then we have three grants, and this is outside of CARES Act funding, and it's outside of American Rescue Plan funding, but related to COVID-19 relief, we have grants that are helping us pay for supplies over time, and some technology upgrades to help out with that. And so before I move on to pending funding, were there any questions about current projects or? No? Our pending funding looks like a whole lot more. Oh, my goodness. We went from $10 million to almost $60 million. Well, the reason for that is because the C D B G mitigation project to improve the drainage in mid-Victoria area to relieve the flooding is a $54 million project. And we haven't heard about that one yet. But right now, we have several pending, really exciting things. We're still in the progress on the application for the sidewalk project with Tech Stop that's gonna put sidewalks in near Strowman Middle School and O'Connor Elementary. And then, of course, we've talked to you a lot here recently about the Green Ribbon Project to enhance community appearance along Loop 463 at Navarro and Stockbauer. We've applied for funding from a private foundation for improvements to the FIRE Academy, and we've also applied for funding for a first responder mental health program. And I wanted to say that while there are eight, about eight grants here that we've applied for, there's one that I already know that we didn't get recommended for, we can strike the funding for the Duck Pond project off our list. We found that out just this week. The local parks grant recommended funding for 18 non-urban projects, and we came in at 21. And while it is disappointing, it's very disappointing, there are some mitigating factors with that. The first is, we don't need to wait another four to six months to begin construction on it now. We can start right away. The other thing that mitigates it just a little bit is, that funding is available every year. So later this year, when the, the notice of funding opportunity opens up on that, and we've completed our parks master plan, can come up with another project to submit, and that parks master plan's really going to help the score on that, but it's also going to give us a chance to talk to our, our liaison, our staff there at T P W D, and find out how we can, how we can increase our score, what can we do better next time?
Katie, if I can jump in, too. In regards to the Duck Pond, yes, we did get the sad news that we were three away from being funded. So we do intend to go to Austin and meet with the committee to make our case, so we plan to do that, and that's on May 27th. So the committee will meet, and we will present to them to justify the need for this project. So hopefully, we'll, we'll get positive feedback there. But nonetheless, we do have alternative plans internally to complete the project. So, so even if it doesn't get funded, we do have the means internally to find ways to do the project.
Additionally, while that, that grant is, you know, at this point in time, as far as we know, we didn't get it, but we have also recently applied for private foundation grants to make improvements at Queen City Park and Will Rogers Park. So moving forward, there are a lot of opportunities for, currently and upcoming, that will help support the city's efforts to expand and build resiliency into our economy, including funding from the Economic Development Administration for Public Works and Economic Adjustment Assistance, along with fiscal year '21 through '23 E D A planning and local technical assistance program. And that's just to name a couple. We actually found out today that they're, they'll be coming up with a lot more notice of funding opportunities in maybe a couple of weeks to a month. There's also mitigation funding coming available from FEMA through T D M in response to the winter storm. As I mentioned earlier, they're currently funding projects to help cover the costs for the immediate response. They're looking for data to submit, and I say "they," that's, that's T D M, the staff at T D M is looking for supporting data to make the case to FEMA to fund permanent category C projects for municipalities, and that could include a lot of improvements to the water And so I wanted to talk to you about some other projects that, that funding could be used for, specifically economic development funding could be used for everything from infrastructure to promoting tourism for the Main Street program, and as we talked about before, to support for local businesses, that could include technical assistance and financial guidance. And in the E D A, also funds planning projects, which means we could apply for assistance with planning an economic development project, and then subsequently apply for funding the actual project. And this could be anything from education and job training to projects that will attract private investment, create jobs, and strengthen the local economy. And then, as Mr. Granger mentioned earlier, I wanted to, to quickly talk about expanding the grant office and what that will mean for the city. It, it will expand our capacity for grants in general. Of course, it will expand our capacity to apply for more grants and manage bigger grants, but we'll also be able to design and manage grant programs to utilize that Rescue Act funding to support businesses in the community. But increased staff will also help increase public awareness of grant programs. Through good public relations and enhanced communications, we can create engagement for upcoming projects. And public support is, will make any proposal that we submit more competitive, and by more competitive, I do know that there are some grant projects or grant programs out there where it's so key that if you don't have it, you won't get the funding. So that's, that's really a, a big goal. And then also, to increase our competitive edge, we need to incorporate diversity, equity, inclusion initiatives into future proposals, and additional staff will help expand that and spearhead those initiatives through research and training. And finally, additional staff will also help shift more grant-related workload away from department staff. And I just wanted to say that, that currently the city has, I, I have on the slide here $10 million, it's really more like nine and a half in grant projects that are managed by outside contractors. On average, outside contractors make approximately 5% of the total. That's not on every project, it kind of depends on how big it is and what the basis for their fee is, but it's approximately that. But this, that's not coming from the city budget, that's coming from the grant budget. So we get a, we get a bill from the contractor, we pay it, we get reimbursed, or we approve it, that that work was done, and then that gets sent to the funder, and the funder pays the, the grant contractor, and that's for administration. They wrote it, they're administering it, they're responsible for all the reporting on it, they're responsible for the, the timelines and everything. So while this money's not coming out of the city's budget directly, managing federal grants in-house will enable us to include the de minimis indirect cost rate in our proposals, which is 10% of the total project cost. And that fu- funding would be retained by the city to pay for overhead, including staff, technology, supplies, office space. And then going forward, we could work toward negotiating an indirect cost rate higher, and what that means is, it's, it's an accounting process that demonstrates our overhead warrants a higher indirect cost rate, and results in a contract with the cognizant federal agency, meaning the federal agency that holds our largest grant funding award, but it is then applied to all federal awards going forward, and it's effective for, usually for a fiscal year.
Adam.
And then it needs to be renegotiated.
Katie, let me add a comment?
Yes.
That's a key point. In prior years, we have not used indirect cost. Usually, the only thing you hear about C D B G, they allocate 15%, that's a given. That, that's not part of this here. By doing, if you're going into more aggressive mode of operation, you're gonna grant, you do want to do this indirect grades. What it is, you establish a, the cost, you do some analysis, you submit it to the feds, and once it's approved, it's set. You do it over a year, I understand that, but at least that's money being left. But at least that's money being left on the table if we want to get into this process. And that's a given on the federal government side, on the federal side.
And having a lower indirect cost isn't of any benefit. You don't get more points or anything like that.
The indirect cost rate analysis is that you submit documentations as to what does it cost you as an entity to run these programs and what is your overhead because of this? In other words, Katie might have a X hundred percent cost right now across the board, which is allocated to the city of Victoria, right? But how much of that time is really associated to each individual grants? So you analyze it, you come up with the actual costs from this worksheet. It's not a simple one page. Same thing you do with your time, your office supplies, computer use, IT, everything else. And you allocate all that cost into one area. You can even use the building itself because you're housing that individual there to do that cost. So there's...
It's just a plugin factor. It's not a, it doesn't encourage you to be efficient, it's just what is your number?
No, exactly. It's like you're submitting paperwork to the government, say, it costs X percent of dollars to do this operation and we like to get this type reimbursed and here's the proof. Does that make sense? It's like going to IRS. My home expense deduction.
It's not like a flat 20% or 15% of...
No, everybody, it all depends. You gather the documentation, your financials and everything else and you submit all this information to the OMB, basically, the feds. And they approve it or disapprove it or adjust it or whatever the case and come to agreement. And it's easier for the feds to manage. Why? They don't have to worry about, oh, who's five, who's 10 and all that stuff. You already have a set percentage established. And usually you have that documentation, here it is. It comes in very handy, especially with FEMA programs. Because if we had that, I don't have to worry about keeping labor hours and all that. Here's my administration cost that's approved by the OMB, you know, that costing us how we operate. So I can allocate X dollars per hour. Does that make sense technically? So that's a big benefit in doing that. And I applaud Katie because that is a high thing that I recommend to be doing. When I was in auditorium, we used to audit those too well.
I'd like to request something in the budget. There needs to be a line for how much we receive in grants. Just one line in the beginning where you have like revenues. So that we can see like property tax, sales tax, grants.
I got you covered.
Because I don't think people really see...
You're right.
They have no idea how much we really get. It's a lot of money and thank you for what you do.
No, you're absolutely right. And what's fabulous about the plug-in new software is left and right. But what's good about the Gilbert 2.0 upgrade on budget here? Are you able to do that stuff? A year ago, 10 years ago, I said, okay, I need a new Excel worksheet. So, but anyway, yes, sir, I understand where you're coming from.
Well, and just briefly, we can easily incorporate a summary in our transmittal letter, right? So typically, there's, you know, an executive summary written by myself slash Gilbert that goes at the beginning of the budget. And so even just highlighting it in that sense, we could do that. Last year, we integrated the usage of budget highlights. You may recall that. And so we could easily incorporate it into a budget highlight document as well.
And that was all I had unless there were any other questions. No, okay, I'll wrap up and...
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Okay, the final report is CIP update from Gilbert and Todd Jerich.
Mayor Pro Tim, Mayor, like I haven't talked to you in a while, appreciate it. Quickly, I want to have Todd, project manager, CIP project manager. I know he hasn't been exposed a lot, but I thought, you know, he needs to man up and get up here with me and take some of this heat away from me, no way. But hey, listen, before I go off on a tangent and start talking about the CIP, let me hand out, if you mind? And this is just for early conversation, you can take this home and look at it. I think earlier you were talking about the ARP and, you know, how the $3 million had flowed into the CIP. I believe a council person wanted to know what's the number. So I just went up to my office, printed out the table. This is my working file, okay? It's not the pretty thing you used to see in a binder and all that, but this is where it comes from. And Todd makes it prettier than that. So this is just my working file. Basically, I just want to point out one thing here. The first column, that's general fund for 2022. On top, I'm proposing to fund the CIP from general fund about $8.3 million. If you go back to prior years, we've never been that high. Now, on the bottom is the total. Project is 8.2. That leaves about $140,000 left, which is going to be used in 2023. But that's where the projects are, the money is going towards. So that make hopefully sense and I don't expect an answer, but this is something for you to kind of go back and think about and everything else. And we can have other meetings, you can sit down with Mr. Garza and we can go through it in more detail. But I just want to answer the question I believe Jeff Pugna brought up earlier. So at least he has something to go back to the House and look at and...
Thank you.
And look at it. But we can have further discussion about this. I don't want to focus too much on this if you, but it's your time. Okay?
I need my glasses to look at it.
You need to bring your glasses?
No.
You know how hard, you know how hard it is a 15-year-old man to run over there in the rain and come back?
In the rain.
Anyway, okay. I had tonight's presentation, CIP update. Let me, let me, I know, I get up here, start talking, I know. Two points of order. And it's just, I was sitting there earlier and listened to everybody talk about Crestwood, Tangawood and all that, that's fabulous conversation. How many times have we had a CIP meeting in prior years? We started our CIP meeting in May, last part, and maybe had one or two meetings after that. We have four meetings so far. I mean, I think that's great. That's great input, great discussion. So at least you got a product coming out of this. That's one thing you gotta look at. Oh, I should look at the bright side of this whole thing. So I think the word's been used a lot, and I hate to keep using it, but folks, this is a living document. Today's this, tomorrow is something else, next year is something else. So it's not a concrete plan. It's a start, it's not a finish. And you keep moving towards that goal and the goal will continue to move. For God's sake, if there's some other new members on board, they will have a different views about stuff. But at least it's moving towards the right direction for the community of Victoria. So I think all the discussion, even though, you know, we don't have this and there, I think it's all still positive. I hope everybody sees that we're trying at least moving towards the direction that we are trying to accommodate a lot of things within a short period of time. I think that's a good thing to look at. With that, I don't say anything else on that. The second part, boy, it's nice to have free money, but it's a pain, I'm sorry. But hopefully we can come out through this and find those buckets and it'll make everything work again. Reiterating, it helps the community overall. Now, for a nice presentation, there's two section in here, counsel. The first section, I'm going to give you an update. What it was in March, the first one I gave you. I have gone back, ignore that we had this meeting in May 4th. I have reversed everything out. There's no ARP money in there. I put all the revenue bond back like you first have seen it back in March. That, that's the first section. I'm going to go through, Todd's going to help me to go over some of the changes that you already heard before, but I just want to make sure since the public has seen it too. The second part of this whole presentation, we're talking about the Tangawood option. In there, we are showing you, this is where we are, counsel, on the dollars without changing anything like you've seen before. And this is the effect if we move forward with each other option, which we'll go through it again with you. Okay? And then you can see what the bottom line looks like. Is that okay? All right. Todd, are you going to walk them through the changes?
So clarify, this is just where you think we are today? This is not set in stone either, this, what you handed out to us?
What you have there is what we are as of today.
Where we are as of today.
8.3, 8.2 mil...
For this coming fiscal year.
Right, not 23, not 20, I have other worksheets. I just want to show in 22 where that money was going. And just, I'm talking, I'm sorry, it's your show, I know. But you would have a book coming to you soon, like the one Todd presented in March. But it's going to be a nice, pretty one and have all those schedules like it had before. Yes, ma'am, that's going to be all updated.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim, counsel. Gilbert pretty much summed everything up there. But, so no, I wanted to go over just some of these proposed adjustments to the CIP. And so, and some of these you've already seen. For example, the first one here, the Main Street sanitary sewer line project. I think Ken brought this to counsel last, last meeting in May, or first meeting in May. So this is the proposed decrease in $187,000 to the CIP for fiscal year '22. This was a, this project was in a critical path. So we amended the 2021 budget and moved that cost, the engineering cost over to 21. So therefore decreasing the need for the utility revenue bond in 2022. This, number two here, this is a traffic signal at Water Street and Moody Street. Again, this was, talked about last council meeting. This is an update to the signal that's at Water Street and Moody. I think right now we've got some span wire and we're looking to upgrade to mast arms and poles. Therefore, this is an increase to the CIP of $175,000 and that'll be coming from the general fund. I got to get a taller mic. Airline sanitary sewer replacement project, this is going to, this is going to, this is going to be advertised this Sunday. This is, well, excuse me, this project here in fiscal year '22 was moved up into the airline utility replacement project. That's going to be advertised this Sunday. Therefore, that was a decrease in the CIP of $208,000. Again, a decrease in the utility operating fund.
Okay, wait a minute, sorry. You're familiar with this, I'm catching up with you. It's a decrease because you're moving it from one year to the next?
Correct, yeah. We, we, this project here was, we were initially funding this, this project in 2022 from the utility revenue, or, excuse me, utility operating fund.
But instead you're doing it this year.
We've now, yeah, we found some cost savings. And again, this is another Critical Path project. I think in 2019, we had a portion of this, we had a failure that resulted in a $200,000 emergency cost. And so we're doing the airline, water line and street improvement project from Laurent to Navarro this year. Again, that's going to be advertised next, or, excuse me, this Sunday. And so we're moving, we're capturing this project here, the one you see on number three. We're capturing that project and with this other one here, so. I'm going to skip over number four, I'll let Gilbert kind of, kind of, or you want to go ahead and take that now?
I'll take it now.
Yeah, go ahead.
He just called me short too, you know that? No, number four, basically as all these movements and parts and puzzles will be moving around, I still have some obligations when it comes to the budgetary side. During the '22, there's a lot of budgetary requests for one time too. And the water fund utility side, that's not related to CIP. And also, as you were, like I mentioned last week, I also make sure I have to comply with a 25% minimum fund balance. What this does is bringing money, eventually cash, back to the fund to make it stable. That's all that is. I think I mentioned this last week.
So the number five, proposed adjustment, this is a Mockingbird mental overlay street project. This is from Laurent to Navarro. Essentially, this project was supported split up. We had $166,000 funded from the general fund and the remaining portion was in VSTDC. I think the project is roughly a total $600,000 project. So we're proposing to move all funding over to VSTDC. Number six, this is the traffic signal at 463 and Navarro. This was just an added project that came out of the budget process. And then this is a cost increase of $625,000. And that'll be added to the CIP in fiscal year '26. And it'll come from, or be funded from VSTDC.
So still, I don't want to go through much on this table because what he actually mentioned in his past few slides is all labeled on this trial balances. Basically, it's showing you on the cash flow side, what's being added, what's deducted. So I figured you can just, maybe if you want to go through it, we can go through it. But it's the same thing I'm repeating right now. Would you like me to go through it? That's okay. And the second page is actually the cost side that he just mentioned. In other words, remember we talked about that 208? Well, my 208 is revenue goes down, here's the 208 coming out. That's the same thing that he has talked about in the previous slides. It just reflected here for my cash. And as you note, I start off with the beginning balances March from the cash and project. And I'm showing the changes and then what's left as of today, bottom line, you can see available funds. And of course, the revenue utilities are gone, the same number, there's no ARP in there at all. Another way to look at this is here. As of March, we had about $132 million proposed funding with $119 million in projects, which leaves you by approximately $12.7 million over the five-year program. Eight, May 18 today, it went down by, the funding went down by 592. If you go back to those slides and add it up, it comes out to 592. Your projects was increased by $119,000. So the overall net difference, it's $907,000 decrease in reduced funding. In your previous slide, back in May, I think you were seeing $6 million coming in, $5 million coming off on the revenue. So that is taken out completely. So everything is back to, May 26 was a minor change on switching funds around. Basically, on the capacity side, this is, I'm not going to go through all this, but again, your blue is what we're issuing, proposed to issue. The candy stripe, I guess, blue, I couldn't figure another one out, is the what's available, still remaining, that we can move back and forth whenever the council decides to want to use it up. So basically, what has changed from March 26 through May 18 is the reduction in 2022 revenue bond by $187,000. That's because, as Todd mentioned, we're doing that project now. Makes sense? And you still have your capacities and everything else goes up by that 187. You had 86.6, now you got 86 point, I mean, 86.6, now you got 86.8. On the GLCL side, however you want to look at it, nothing has changed. You still have the same proposed debt in '24 as of March, as same as May. And again, the 25th and 2025, five and five, nothing has changed. Your available debt capacity back in May was about close to $100 million. And as of today, it's close to $100,000. Again, as council decides, go through this process as it grows and matures, changes, those numbers on the bottom on the candy stripe color deal will change, move forward or backwards.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And I know you're extremely busy with budget and doing this, this stuff. All of this is kept with, done with blinders on with relation to House Bill 1869 that deals with how debt is issued by a city?
Now, that's a good question. Majority of all these projects that we're looking at, the debt in the ones you see that from '22 to '26, right now, as given CIP right now, are mainly related to, are allowable through the current, if it goes that way. Now, if it goes south, like we're talking about livability projects, you know, parks, stuff like that, we might have to look at it differently. Right now, it's not in there. But if something comes up on the master plan, for example, and every, all the other ones that not really fits on the definition as Austin comes up with, yeah, it's not there right now. But we need to figure out an alternative process and how to take care of those. Does that answer your question, Mr. Pugna?
Yes, I was just making sure we were staying the course with what we know for sure.
Absolutely, no, I'm not throwing any, anything right there.
It wouldn't affect us in '22, we're not borrowing any money in '22, '23.
No, it would be the '24, '25.
Right, it would be.
Yeah. But if everything stands, sorry, I'm sorry. You're correct, everything stands now, you should be okay. You know, Thomas, I don't know where, you know, you got any input about this bill or nothing?
1869 right now is incredibly difficult to predict where we're going to go. We're in the last two weeks of the session. 1869, House Bill 1869 passed out of the House with significant amendments. It was taken to committee yesterday in the Senate. Dana Williams Capone, the library director, and I went to Austin to testify on that bill. And most of the amendments were stripped out of the... And most of the amendments were stripped out of the bill, only to be added back in later in the process. I don't know what the status of that bill will look like by the time it comes out of the Senate or even if it will come out of the Senate, there was significant objection to it in committee. So at this stage, it's kind of a guessing game what that bill will look like and how it will impact our future.
One clarification just for, as my understanding, the bill relates to tax rates. That, you know, you, you sell bonds that you can't really tie to a tax, you've got to get it somewhere else at the tax rate. So that's not saying that you can play sales tax revenue or some other type of revenue, does that make sense?
Yes.
So there's all the, if worst, worst case scenario, we've got to think outside the box, that's just my point. Any other questions before I move on? All right. Now, as you well know, all those available debt capacity, you know, we've got a lot of things happening right now. I'll let Mike address some of these because we have a lot of master plans.
So this slide, counsel, just to remind you that we have ongoing master plans. All of them, as you can see, we have the drainage master plan, thoroughfare master plan, we have the downtown master plan, parks master plan, and then we have the facilities master plan where the RFQs are due tomorrow. So, so we have this slide here to remind you that each of these plans, except for the thoroughfare master plan, will have implementation sections also with funding, things that need to be funded. So in the, in the section, you will have, for example, for parks, dog park, splash pads, all these things will be outlined in the master plan that will require funding. So we just wanted to show you this slide to remind you that, that they will be coming in terms of recommendations from these plans.
We also have a compensation study too, right?
That is correct, we do have that too. Okay, thank you, Gilbert.
Thank you, Mike. And back to Mr. Bargnai's point of view on the bonds, this is going to be, you know, challenging if the law goes the way that are in our favor, that's all. But the sun will come out, we'll move on. All right, this is the second part I mentioned, I want to talk about the strategy on Tanglewood, okay? This option includes phasing in the entire Tanglewood subdivision over a management period, in other words, in phases, okay? As you well know, I hope, and if you don't, I will tell you that currently right now in the CIP, we have about $5.2 million in Tanglewood streets. Todd will go over those with you. This will add on another 5.2, 5.3 million dollars on top of that to develop a phase-out process, which will bring it up to about $10.3 million, okay, Todd?
Thanks, Gilbert. So we'll go over, right now, what you see is, on the map there, we have the orange streets and the blue streets. The orange streets or the orange color there reflects what we, what you, what we currently have in the CIP right now as of March 26. And so that, that looks like $375,000 for design in fiscal year 22, 2.1 million for utilities in '23, and 2.6 for streets in 2024. And that currently is $5.1 million for that, for that project. Like I said, the, the color in the orange there. To add to, to make this a complete Phase 1 option, that would entail adding the streets that are in blue. And so additionally, that would, that would raise the design, or the additional cost for design would be 390,000, 2.1 for, for utilities, 2.7 million for streets and for an added cost of 5.2 million. And like Gilbert mentioned, that would bring the total cost for, for Phase 1 or this option of Tanglewood to roughly $10.3 million. Now, Gilbert, I'll let you go over this portion.
Yeah, so both of those options, both of those options, option one and, and the original, I guess, what happens on the other streets? Is there no chip seal, is there no, nothing else going on?
Nothing.
Nothing else would change.
No, not, not.
This is in addition to.
Nothing planned, this is just added to complete the streets, but nothing on those other streets. They're really too far gone to really put a lot of money into it. And just chip sealing them would not improve that ride quality at all.
Let me, let me hold this up for a minute. What's the rating on Westwood, the PCI rating?
I can tell you what it is.
It's 68, 64, and 67. And what was the average rating when we did the study? It was 63. Every, every district in here has a lot more streets that are worse off than Tanglewood. Don't get me wrong, Tanglewood has bad streets and I understand how they feel. I live in Castle Hills West, used to sit out in the audience and would talk, you can ask Jeff, I used to talk about my streets incessantly. Originally, my streets were supposed to be done in 2020, okay? I understood after a while, it wasn't a promise. It's not the capital improvement promise, it's the capital improvement program and it is subject to change. When we had the study done, we had a study done with, with equipment that measured, wasn't measured by a person walking down with a, with a clipboard and that's how it used to be done. So all those streets were measured by technology. And I understand that Tanglewood wants their streets done. There are a lot worse streets than that, even though their streets are bad and I understand how they feel. And I could name streets in every district here, okay? And before Tanglewood streets would get done, I, if you're going to add streets, which I'm not for adding streets, I like the original thing, we have too many studies coming up. We need to have some flexibility going forward. We'll have a better bond rating, it's a better use of our money, we're paying off debt. I was very happy with the original proposal. Well, I was, I was happy and I'm sad. My, all my streets in Castle Hills West aren't going to get done and I argued for that since 2013. There are streets in Castle Hills West that are actually exits to Guy Grant that are rated 50, 41, 30, okay? I, I understand that people in Tanglewood want their streets, I represent Tanglewood too. But I think, I, first of all, if more streets were going to be added, they wouldn't be the first on my list. And I don't think they should be added because I think we should stick with the original, original thing that was proposed to us. We'll have a better bond rating, if we have to go out and borrow money, we'll be in a better position. When we get these studies back, there's going to be a lot of things that have been brought up that, that me may want to buy because the CIP isn't just streets, it's parks, it's everything else in the city. So I'd like to stick with the original plan and I'd like to know how everybody else in the council feels about it. But if you're going to go with an option, I'm sorry, then I'm going to stand up here and let me give you an example. In Ricky's district, which would be Dr. Young's, drive down Fern Street, drive down Lilac Street and tell me that that street, those streets aren't worse than some of the streets in, especially Westwood and Tanglewood. There, now, I would suggest if we can come up with more money, that as the CIP manager has a list of all the bad streets, that he come up with a list, if we come up with more money, if we add more money to, from the American Recovery Act and we use it for streets, that we do the worst streets first. They have bad streets in Tanglewood, but the additions are not as bad as hundreds of streets in Victoria. There's 100 and, over 100 plus neighborhoods in Victoria and a lot of them have bad streets. So I am not for changing, the original plan was a good plan. If we come up with money, then I would ask the, the manager for CIP to present some other projects to us, but not just because a neighborhood comes and talks about it. We've had neighborhoods before, we've had Woodway, we've had other neighborhoods that come. It needs to be based on what are the worst streets and streets that go in and out of neighborhoods. I mean, that's my feeling, I'd like to know how everybody else feels about it.
Well, I'm going to jump in, there's a difference between Tanglewood and all the other subdivisions that we've heard about. The Tanglewood streets were bad in 2015 when I got on council and the answer was, we're not going to rebuild those yet because we've got to get to the utilities first. So it's not comparing apples and oranges to say, or it's not comparing apples to apples to, to compare Tanglewood to any other subdivision unless it's one that you tell me it's got utility problems as well. So it's a very expensive fix, so the easiest thing to do is let's not deal with it. And then it's, let's wait until we have bond capacity, let's wait until we have utility capacity. Well, we had utility capacity, it went somewhere. I don't know exactly where it went, I think it got absorbed into the capital improvement program. There's a lot of needs, but it's supposed to be a living, breathing document. And yet, Councilman Lofgren seems to say, this is it, it's done the way it is. In fact, I guess, you don't even want to make the changes that were suggested earlier because those changed the document from the way it was.
You know?
But I really don't want to digress from that, there's a difference in Tanglewood, we're going to have to address it at some point. Is that point going to be, I don't think it's even going to be 27 the way you're looking at it. It looks like we've got this bond capacity, we're going to use it for other things. And so Tanglewood's going to then be, you know, still nothing done about it.
Well, you can say the same thing about Castle Hills West. And if you look at, when we had the meeting about street improvement and when we had the CIP meeting, it got brought up that the best way to do is the worst streets in neighborhoods. And if you look, there is not, there are very few neighborhoods where all the streets are getting done. If you're going to do all Tanglewood, then you go tell the people in Castle Hills West why all their streets aren't getting done. Or Vista del Sol, you want me to list all the neighborhoods? I, I asked you, Jen, if you'd like to propose a bond issue so that all those streets could be done because they need their streets done too. My street, the streets that I, I don't even want my street done in Castle Hills West. I understand that, but this other streets in my neighborhood, especially the ones that go out, which are rated poorer than Westwood, should be fixed before Westwood is fixed. And there are streets in every district, in District 1, District 3, District 2, that need to be fixed. They haven't spoken up, but they could speak the same way as I'm speaking. You've put me in an interesting position because I represent Tanglewood too. But I understand that there's a lot of other neighborhoods in, in town that need their streets fixed.
Well, what does it take for a bond election then?
Have to get all the council members, you'd have to get a majority of the council members to agree upon a bond issue.
And then the voters.
And then the voters.
And then the voters, well.
And you'd have to say what the bond issue is for. And if you, and I'm going to tell you right now, if you do it for one neighborhood, none of the other neighborhoods are going to vote for it.
No, I, I wouldn't do it for one neighborhood. If we've got, if this, if this need is so much greater than our capital improvements program, it is time for us to start talking about that, plus the fact that we do have all these other plans coming, there are going to be a lot of needs.
Mr. Gil, what are the conditions of those utilities specifically? What's the difference between the ones in orange and yellow, I mean, orange and blue?
They're, they're all about the same.
They're all about the same?
Yeah, it's all built into 50s, 60s. The sewer is a mixture of clay, mostly clay and some concrete, but mostly clay. And they're, it's cracked, it's split, the joints are separating. And then the water lines are the old cast iron and they're six inch, so they're small.
And we know what happens when the base gets wet and that's what you're saying is happening.
Well, I don't, unless there's a break, but I'm just saying there's, as, as this continues to age, there's going to be more water breaks, there's going to be more sewer stoppages, more intensive cleaning. We know the sewer is in the condition it's in because it's been TVed, televised, and cleaned. We, we've already done that, so we know the condition of it. And there's other neighborhoods that, that have this same similar situation. I mean, Tanglewood's not just alone by itself.
Right, Tanglewood is not by itself. I understand you wanting, it's in your district and I understand that, but there are other neighborhoods that have issues underground too. And there, there are neighborhoods and I give, go to down Fern Street or Lilac and I believe you replaced the sewers there or the water lines because it's, there's, you can see the difference where it was replaced down the middle of the street, same way in Castle Hills. So, and there are other neighborhoods that need their sewer. If, if their sewers were collapsing, I'd say, yes, we need to do it now, but they're not collapsing. I think they, the CIP manager needs to have a list of projects. It's not just on the rating of the street, it's going to be on if they need their sewers done. But if we can come up with additional money for additional projects, I'm for it. But I'm, I'm not, I'm for paying off debt and I'm for having flexibility and I'm for having a better bond rating so that we can fix streets down the road because I think it's the best way to go. Let me talk about debt for a minute, which I don't bring up a whole lot. If you take all the cities, the top 100 cities in Texas, okay? We have one of the higher rates of debt, I believe it's 88 out of 100. In other words, there's 87 cities that of their property tax, their property tax rate, a smaller percentage goes to debt. Now, if you want to incur more debt, to me, we, I, I used to bring it up all the time about bond issues and that gentleman over there used to say, well, our, we can't do that, our credit card is maxed out. And we, we have a responsibility, yes, for streets, but we also have a fiscal responsibility to the city. And the, the plan that Gilbert presented is a much better use of our tax dollars. I understand that these streets weren't included, but a lot of other streets weren't included either. Now, if we can come up with extra money, then I would look to the CIP manager to decide which things should go first and then we could discuss it and you could bring up Tanglewood, I could bring up Castle Hills West, he could bring up Fern and Lilac Street, I mean, we could go around. I'd like to know how everybody feels about it.
Well, emotionally, I want to do the blue. I mean, that's what it comes down to me, I just, I would love to. I like the paydown of the debt that was presented with just the orange streets. If the utilities are still holding in that area, then see if we can't stretch them for a couple more years. And yes, this is a very expensive neighborhood, very expensive. And you've, you made some good arguments, Mr. Lofgren, around actual street ratings. If we're not going to use those for repairing streets, why did we do the study?
Point.
Did that study look at just the surface or did it look at underneath?
Look at the base.
It did look at the base.
Am I correct, it looked at the base, Mr. Gil? It did a sonar of the base of the roads?
They did not do the, they did the base for the collectors, it was just, would have been way too expensive on those.
Okay.
But I know there's not much base there, it's the old, not even Caliche base, the old gravel base with no subgrade improvements in there.
Nothing like we, we put in now?
You know, when you, we start adding things, you know, marks correct, it, it, other streets that needed and were on the scope, on, on the radar to get done, and then, then they get put on the back burner. So it's almost a double-edged sword, you know, of we're going to get cut one way and cut the other. a double-edged sword, you know, of, we're gonna get cut one way and cut the other. Are we gonna continue to do this every year, just add streets, uh, at will or at random according to complaints? Or are we gonna use our, our, the information that we have, uh, from our studies and our evaluations?
Madam Mayor Protam, if I may make a suggestion, I know that this is not an item that's up for vote tonight and there doesn't need to be a hard decision, this is just a city manager's report. But it seems as though the discussion is stalling without a decision. And perhaps it might be better if you were to simply poll the table. As if you were going to vote tonight, where would council members fall out on this particular issue? That may give staff a little bit clearer direction about what council as a whole is interested in doing.
Uh, current?
I would, I would vote to go with the original plan.
I would vote for the amendment presented.
I'd go with the original plan.
Oh, it's the original?
What about all the changes that they talked about, is that just to be able to do Tanglewood? Or do you need to do those, the Main Street 187,000 down, Water and Moody's Signal 175,000 up?
All those been incorporated back to, you know, back to March and some minor adjustments, those, those are in there. Unless you say, Gilbert, I don't want those and.
So those changes are okay?
Those, yeah, I mean, that's, that's not gonna affect.
That's not sticking with the original?
No, okay. As of March, excuse me, as of May 18, we have months of modifications since May. I mean, March 26, I'm tongue tied here.
So those, and those are not related to Tanglewood?
To the original becomes revised, revised original, without the Tanglewood additional portion.
And we were just talking about Tanglewood when we were discussing this.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about the budget? I know we haven't had the budget meetings yet, but, um, there was a possibility, depending on what happens in the legislature, about us getting destination taxes. I assume you made the budget without adding any extra in for that? Is that true?
I don't like people reading my mind, but anyway.
I know you're conservative and I'm sure that's probably what you did, if I.
Yes, sir, there's two things, and it's, it's a legit question, thank you, cuz, uh, it will be talked about. Debt is not incorporated, cuz I don't wanna start counting my chicken before the hatch. But there's a good possibility you have that margin possibly come in. Second, is that I'm not including any type of stimulus that we're encountering right now or in the coming year, okay? Or in future months. For example, I don't know if you've seen your sales taxes past month, we had a big jump. Well, a lot of that has to do because we had that big stimulus. You know me, I'm not gonna assume that's gonna be there, so I will stick to my guns as a normal trend. So there is a huge possibility that, yeah, there's a possibility your sales tax will come in just a little higher. And, uh, for example, this huge bump for this month and the remainder of the year, if you have an increase, that money can put aside to do whatever else you want, that's not included currently in the CIP. And then to you also mentioned, since we're talking budget, and don't hold me to it, is that, remember back in August, no, not August, I think November, Ms. Scott, uh, about the Stabilization Fund? And, uh, Ready Day, what, I need to call it something, I know. But we created that fund where we can put money in and where council has discretion how they wanna use it. My intent is to start growing that fund this year. So I don't wanna say what, how much, no, I, cuz I was still wanna get with Mr. Jesus about, Mr. Garza, sorry, about that strategy, but he's aware of it, but if he's small and that's great, he's frowning, then I'll talk about it tomorrow.
He smiled.
He's smiling.
He has that big TV down there.
I don't feel like he's just watching over us to make sure we're paying attention the whole time.
Yeah.
Did that answer your question, Ms. Lofgren? Yes, you answered my question, and I just want everybody, I want the Tanglewood people to know that they are getting some streets done in 2020.
By point two.
Yeah. They're, they're just not getting every street done in their neighborhood. And they are getting Teakwood, the lady mentioned Teakwood, and then Teakwood is gonna be done. And it goes in and out of their neighborhood. But I would like at a work session, that we have a little time at the next work session, just to discuss the CIP and maybe to understand some other projects that might, if we come up with money, that me might wanna fund, if it's Tanglewood, if it's, if it's Castle Hills West, if it's streets in the other districts, if it's a Parks project. I'd like to know, like, what would be the top priority for, uh, CIP if we came up with some other money?
Correct.
I would, I would, I would suggest that it, there's no point in creating work for nothing, right? And so if council wants to quote unquote find money, that isn't something that's gonna be found. That's something that's gonna have to be created through shutting projects, shutting the budget, or decreasing the budget, I should say. If that's the path that council wants to go, then I would suggest we do that first, before we come up with projects.
Okay, well, let me, let me go, let me go back. If we come up with extra money, can then, we then have a suggestion on extra CIP projects to do? For example, for example, if we come up with extra sales tax money and we have this rainy day fund and we end up with some money in it, can we then come up with extra CIP projects? And as a council member, I would request it.
But, but you have a five-year look ahead of CIP projects in front of you already. So are you looking for a sixth year?
No, what I'm looking for is if.
Could be pulling ahead some of those that we've already said are.
Well, and that could be too, we could pull ahead some and then some others could get added to the list. But we could get more projects done.
But we have a good idea already, and they have put in the work to say, if we had extra funds, we might be able to fit in this project, and they've done that.
That would be good.
But we have master plans that are coming that are also gonna have projects.
Right, and those could be added into the mix.
I think these are all good topics to discuss in a different setting. You know, our objective for tonight was to get some simple direction on whether we add more streets to Tanglewood or not, that direction has been given. I would hate to continue this conversation, um, outside of the scope that we've.
Well, and that's why I'd like to discuss it at a work session.
Right.
Where we could actually.
And we can certainly do that.
Okay, that'd be great.
And we, we were already planning on revisiting the CIP, you know, in the fall. You know, Gilbert made the comment earlier that now we're not waiting till May to start talking about the CIP, right? It's really a year-long conversation. And so with the master plans that are scheduled to be completed this summer and in the fall, we were already planning on revisiting the CIP with you in a workshop setting in the fall. One of the things that we can do, um, in parallel to finalizing the master plans is doing what Spence suggested, which is, um, creating a list of additional projects. However, I would probably agree with Councilmember Bachnight that we have a list of projects that we've spread out over five years. And so if there were to be additional funding in, say, fiscal year '22, wouldn't we simply just move up projects from fiscal year '23 up to '22 to get them done sooner? And I think that's the point Jeff was trying to make. And so if the conversation wants to be centered around streets, since obviously that's what we're talking about, in quote unquote finding more money for streets, there's a slew of different ways that communities can, um, increase revenues centered around streets, and if that's a conversation that council wants to have, we can have it in a workshop setting. I mean, you all already know that there are cities out there that do have a source of funds specific for streets
Right.
that we've never had a conversation about.
I think it might be good to have that conversation. But even when we get the master plans back, there may be projects on there that would be included in the CIP that if we have, maybe they would take precedent over moving something up.
Yeah. So if it's okay with y'all, we can just continue that conversation. The only thing that I would add to Tanglewood that, um, um, I wish, you know, staff would have, I guess, mentioned it, is that the benefit of doing the blue, um, and Ken could probably speak to it, but because there's also utilities intended, that's part of the reason why some of the blue is added, right? But if, if you remove the blue and just do the orange and make the orange really nice, then go back to do the blue, what are you having to go through?
Orange?
You're having to go through the orange, right? So part of the, having a complete Phase One is that it not only facilitates the gravity-fed lines that are underground, right? But it also facilitates doing just one part of the neighborhood so that you don't have to necessarily go through it whenever you, whenever there's funding for other stuff. Um, and I don't know if Ken was planning on talking about, you know, some of that because we actually had some more slides and then, you know, we just started having the conversation. But, you know, there was some rationale to adding those blue streets the way that we did, which was again, based on the underground utilities and the fact that, you know, it would eliminate any issues from having to then go through the orange to get to the blue if, if it came later.
They couldn't do the blue before the orange, Ken?
It's, they, it's, it's getting, you wanna work sanitary sewer from the downstream up, okay? So you gotta start at Teakwood, work your way up. And, and part of that reason to get over to Beachwood, if you'll see, on, on the original phase that was presented in March, we had to go down Tanglewood a little bit. Well, that, that's where the sewer runs, there's, it's, that's kinda one section of the sewer that all goes down into the Teakwood outfall. Other sections, there's a little bit of Sherwood that goes that way. But then you've got the upper corner on the right goes out towards Linwood and then, believe it or not, the easiest ones, uh, the circle streets, they'll go to Sam Houston. So there's a kind of a madness to it, if you will, to work from the downstream up. You don't wanna work in the middle, cuz you miss a grade, you're out of luck. The other thing that Jesus mentioned too, as we're looking at it, you gotta remember, you've gotta get trucks in there to haul base, you gotta get trucks excavation. And what we always look at is, how do they get in? And how are they getting out? Because I can assure you, with the volume of, of trucks that are gonna come in and out, it's going to severely stress those current streets. So there's, there's a method behind some of that, is to get those, those trucks in and out, you know, work from their way, get the utilities in and then work from the back out.
But it's, and it's also based on the, um, on the utilities?
Yes.
The 2019 plan, Phase One, was a little bit different.
Little bit different, that's correct.
And it didn't have the doubling back on itself, but this one is trying to get to the utilities.
This one, the, the Phase One one was to get, get, primarily to get Beachwood. There is a priority for getting Beachwood in this, this original March 26th.
And that was in two before.
Right, to get into Beachwood, we have to get down Tanglewood. But yes, that was, that was the reason we had to revise some of the phasing, not the phasing, revise some of the streets from the 2019 plan to this one.
Yo, can you explain why that section of Sherwood is blue and not orange, originally orange?
Which thing, let me look, Sherwood. Oh, that wasn't in the original, that did not need to be in that original plan.
Why?
Because the, again, the original plan was Beachwood. That's what, that's what I always, you know, Mike and I discussed it, Mike drove the streets and Mike was, you know, pretty much, we gotta get Beachwood. So to get Beachwood, we didn't have to do Sherwood.
But, but you're talking about going downstream up?
Right, but the sewer line on, on Sherwood goes from, uh, about Tanglewood and then it wraps into Teakwood. So it doesn't, it doesn't, we don't have to go down, uh, Tanglewood again. That makes sense? You, it's. The sewer line, we don't have to backtrack on a sanitary sewer on, on Sherwood. We would build it such that when we came in and did Sherwood later, for instance, if, if, as you selected, we can do Sherwood without having to tear any of the orange back up with sanitary sewer. We don't have to go back down Maplewood or go, go down Linwood for, for the sewer or the water.
Are you gonna tie into Teakwood?
We would tie the sewer into Teakwood and some of it may actually go to Tanglewood. I, I don't, I can, I've got those mapped, I can look at it, but.
Makes sense, why wouldn't it be done initially? Sounds good, but you're still crossing other utility lines, well, just do it now.
You, you really don't, I, I'll, I'll get with you afterwards and kinda show you the maps, cuz it's very, it is, you don't have to cross, the only one you have to cross is Maplewood. But again, you're gonna have the lines that adapt where they're already sat. So yes, you may have to cross a little bit of a street, but you're not having to go back down a complete street that you've already done.
Okay, well, I think we have the direction that we need.
There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, council.